Good afternoon. Welcome to the first broadband authority meeting in January. So a call to order our Franklin County Broadband Authority meeting at 2:00 P. M. And then our first order of business is open the floor for nominations for chairperson for the year of 2025 for the Franklin County Broadband Authority. Are there any nominations?
I asked Lori a while ago, she was interested, and she said she would do it if there's nobody else. She's got the vice chair, but she said she was very interested in doing it if nobody else was caring for it. So Lori wants to do it if there's nobody else, so.
I'll make a motion to nominate Supervisor Vice Chairman Smith.
I didn't say everything he said I said. You embellished it just a little bit.
I'll make a motion to close the floor nominations.
Thanks, guys.
I'll second it. Well, wait a minute. Before I second it, let me ask Steve if there's anybody else.
Hey, Marshall did.
I seconded. Marshall did.
Was there anybody else who wants to nominate anyone?
Come on now, y'all. Somebody else step up. Now, Steve, okay. There you go. Very good.
So we got a first and a second?
All right. And Mr. Tatum moved to close the nominations. So we take a roll call vote or just a voice vote? I think we do a voice vote for Lori Smith as Chair of the Broadband Authority. Y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, yours.
All right. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sandy, for that. The next item on our... Oh, I get to bang the gavel. Yay. Next item of business for the authority is to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair of the Broadband Authority for 2025. So the floor is open for nominations, and we have a full presence of the board, so nobody's not here that could be nominated in, you know, like we did last year.
I nominate John. Mike?
Second.
Motion to close the floor for nominations.
All right. Good job.
Y'all got that down pat, don't you?
Thank you.
Okay, so motion to close nominations accepted. We will do so by voice vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Mike Carter as Vice Chair of the Broadband Authority, please say aye. All those opposed? And that carries. Mr. Carter, congratulations. I look forward to working with you.
Always.
Yeah, so that's good. All right. Thank you all very much. And again, you're just getting a kick out of this, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
I would again like to thank my colleagues for your confidence in me continuing to chair. I'm learning a lot, and I'm very grateful for that. Okay, the next thing on our agenda in your packet, you have the approval meeting dates for 2025. It is your second handout in your packet. As you will recall, when we were setting our board calendar, there was a determination made that we would try to do our broadband meetings when they're needed at 2:00 P. M. on Tuesdays before our monthly meeting versus on Thursdays when we may not have a work session on any given Thursday. So that schedule represented is Board Day at 2:00 P. M. for 2025. Are there any questions?
These are as needed, right?
Yes. Broadband meetings are as needed, yes. Any questions, comments? Does this schedule still set well with the board? Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2025 meeting dates of the Broadband Authority.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Next on your agenda is the approval of the authority minutes from November 21st. I know you all have taken some time to read these. Are there any additions, deletions that you would like to present today, corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the broadband authority minutes from November 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And we have a second, Mr. Tatum. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Sandy, I will defer to you at this point.
All right. Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda is a request for a letter of support for BEED. If you recall, back from the November meeting, we discussed that several of the internet providers would be approaching the localities for letters of support as they move forward with the BEED application. And BEED is the federal broadband program that's coming out with substantial funding for internet access throughout the country. The state of Virginia was able to get about $1.4 billion through the BEED program. And so this is a program that every state, based on the number of residences that are still that still need to be connected, they figured out a formula. Each state had to work through a lot of how many residences are remaining and what the cost would be to get there. And so Virginia was one of the first several that got approved for the program. And so they're looking to move into the application phase soon. And so if you recall from November, the authority had granted me permission to issue letters of support for those partners that we're already working with. And so primarily that's Chantel, River Street, Zytel, and Citizen Telephone, which is a small area of the western part of the county. We kind of left it that if there were any other companies that were interested in a support letter or if any of the partners were asking the county to contribute to a BEED application, then you wanted them to come back and make that request here before you. So you had all the information before issuing the letter of support. So and we do have Comcast here. Sandra Pratt, she's with Comcast. She's going to come and just share a little bit about Comcast and their request. I will say, from my understanding of the BEED application is the applicants will get 10 points on their score if they have a letter of support from the locality. As far as from us, I don't think, and I know of no harm for us to grant a letter of support. We don't have to grant a letter of support to anybody that asks, but by the same token, I'm not aware of any detriment necessarily to providing a letter of support if we feel comfortable that that's a partner we'd like to see working in the county. And so I'll leave it at that until she comes and makes a presentation. If you have any additional questions after she comes and makes her request, I'll be happy to try to answer those before we move on.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
And she may share this, but I will say that we currently do not have a contractual obligation or relationship, I guess is a better way, with Comcast. And I'm not sure you actually have a presence in Franklin County yet.
No.
So this would be kind of, they would be new kind of to the territory, so to speak. Think they're all around us, but they're not actually in Franklin yet. So Sandra, welcome.
Ms. Pratt, welcome. We're so happy to have you with us today.
Thank you. And congratulations to you both for your nominations.
We thank, thank you.
And your unanimous nominations, right? I've seen that work before in other rooms. I know how that goes, right? But good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to have this time. Again, my name's Sandra Pratt. I am the Government Affairs and External Affairs individual in this region. So I'm happy to be here before you today to ask for a letter of support for our upcoming BEED application. The applications are due March 1st, so we are busy assessing all of the areas across the state that it makes sense for us to apply for. And we're excited about this opportunity to come into Franklin County and grow and provide service and options for service to those who are not served and those who are underserved. So just four areas that I want to say about Comcast that we believe we can make an impact here in your county, and that's an economic impact. We all know that high-speed broadband is crucial for economic development and quality of life. So high-speed internet will have the potential to attract new business and then help support your current businesses. It also enhances educational opportunities and remote work capabilities. Also, we want to let you know that we have a commitment to rural connectivity. We are trying to address the digital divide not only across your county but others in the state, and we're focusing on delivering that in the underserved and unserved areas. So we have future-proofed technology. We're going to be constructing all fiber network that will ensure reliability and scalability. And also, we are at 1 to 1.2 gig speeds, which is going to position your residents and businesses in the county for technological advancements. So the potential for further expansion is with this subsidized construction in Franklin County, it opens up the opportunity for us to explore additional capital investments in the county. And so we're willing to collaborate on identifying the needs for those future projects. So I'm asking for your support for a letter of support. We do understand that you already work with some ISP providers, but we do think that we can come in and join all of those and help your citizens. So at this time, I'll take any questions. I may not be able to answer them, but I'll take them.
Okay, Bort. Do you all have any questions for Ms. Pratt? Any comments?
I have one. Ms. Pratt, again, thank you for coming today. Do you have any ideas of when Comcast might be starting the development in Franklin County?
Well, it will depend. So as I said, the applications are due March 1st, and then it's probably going to take anywhere from two to three, four months for those to be reviewed. So we may not even know until the fall who actually gets awarded the projects. And so, you know, we would plan to start just as soon as we could. But there's a four-year timeframe in which to complete it. We would prefer to do that within two years to three. But it's also going to depend on what other projects we get awarded.
And are there any designated areas in the county that you'd start in?
Yeah. Well, we actually have received from the state the ZIP code areas that are of focus. So we do have that. We are still putting together the best business case, but there's currently over 2,500 unserved addresses within various ZIP codes. So it's Rocky Mount, Glade Hill, Hardy, Burnt Chimney, Union Hall, Boones Mill, and of course, Rocky Mount are the largest chunk. So we would assess and go from there, but we would lean into where our plan already exists, which is Roanoke County. We've got some on the Bedford side of Smith Mountain Lake. We've already been doing some projects in Bedford that's with our capital investment along with some subsidy programs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the authority members? Just stay.
Just one quick question. So our biggest bottleneck here in Franklin County is the utility poles, both the evaluation of the poles as well as replacement when they need it. And I wondered if you faced a similar problem in other areas and if you have found any really neat solutions to that.
Yeah, I did read your minutes from the last meeting, and that issue is occurring in lots of other areas and states. We're dealing with it now in West Virginia and Ohio, not just with Appalachian Power but with First Energy. It is an issue that we meet about weekly. We're looking for avenues to overcome the delays. We have a lot of applications in the queue. There, I think there's going to be a break at some point with that issue, whether it's FCC that pushes it down, or there are certain states that are also taking some of their broadband funding and creating a pole replacement fund to help facilitate that. So we do realize that that is a problem, and we will try to factor that into the timing that we put forth in our application.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comment? Okay. Ms. Pratt, thank you so much. We very much appreciate the opportunity to support Comcast. We feel variety is of course good for our citizens and choice. And so at this time, I would ask the authority if someone would like to make a motion that we submit a letter of support for BEED funding for Comcast. Oh, Steve, I'm sorry.
I'll just add before that is what we've kind of, what the board requested before was that if any of those applicants are successful, that they'll routinely report to the authority with their progress on the project and keep us apprised of the project. Because remember, BEED, we're not the applicant.
Right.
The ISP is the applicant. But I think what the authority wanted is to make sure whoever the successful candidates were would periodically, whether that's monthly or quarterly, stay in contact with staff and provide updates, potentially come to a meeting and give updates. And so just wanted to make that clear, that that's what we've kind of put in the other letters. And so
Sure. Would you like that part of the motion?
If that's still what the authority would like to see, we'll make sure that's part of this letter as well.
Should it be part of the motion?
I think so. Just to be clear, that that's kind of the expectation.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion as such.
So moved. As Steve described it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Any further discussion on this, gentlemen? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. And you will be getting your letter of support, Ms. Pratt.
Thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
And thank your colleagues as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sandy?
All right. So last item is just some project updates. Two things. You should have a copy of this chart, so I'll go through that, just kind of explain what that is. And then you should have a copy of the most recent Chantel update coming around. We'll also put this in your Friday packet coming up, so you'll have it digitally as well. But
Thank you.
Just wanted to hand you that because I wanted to just point out a couple of things there. So I guess we'll just start there with existing projects. And so if you go to the spreadsheet, that's kind of green color that I handed out before. Last time we met, there was some discussion about how much progress has been made in each of these projects. And so originally, this chart kind of showed the breakdown by election district on the left-hand side there. And then it showed the number of premises that were included in the grant. So let's just take Blackwater-Chantel, for example. So our Chantel project has 1,219 VODI-supported, VODI-funded households that they need to meet in the Blackwater District, that they need to connect to. And I can tell you that number's going to be higher than that, but this is the number that's actually being funded through the state, through the state funding. And so if you, what we've added is the next column over is that the construction now for those 1,219 in Blackwater is 64 and 1/2% complete. Now, remember, Blackwater District now goes all the way over to 220 and Boones Mill, so it's not just Callaway, but they're heading out in that direction. You know, they kind of started in Hardy and at the lake. I think I explained this last month. And they're kind of moving to the west from the original, from the original area. So Blue Ridge, 1,258, 6%. So you can see, because of the way that it's coming, it's coming from east to west, Blue Ridge is kind of the last that they're going to reach. And a lot of that is Faram, the Faram area will be most of that. Conversely, you can see the numbers here with Boone, 889. Well, they started in that area, so 98% complete. So that's kind of, it's not that any one district is necessarily more important than the other. It's just kind of the way that the progress has moved and where it started. And so it's kind of working almost conversely with River Street, where River Street was starting kind of at Route 40 in the Pinhook-Sego area and it's kind of moving down that way. So that's just a description kind of of how those are working. The Chantel number represents the number that are part of that grant. Again, that doesn't mean every household, it doesn't mean there's only 1,219 households in Blackwater that need internet. Just means that under the Chantel grant, that's the number we're covering in the Blackwater District, as an example, and going down the list for each other district. Yes, sir?
The complete, percentage completion, that's actual, connected to the homes and online?
Well, they have the ability to be connected now. We don't know if everybody's going to connect or not connect. So it's, as an example, it's to your house, just use an example. It's to your house. You may or may not be connected yet, but what we're showing is it's available to your house or certain residence's house. Does that make sense?
Yes, I've got.
This isn't the number that are actually connected. It just means, hey, we came by your house, so it's available to you. So we can check off that address. Does that make sense?
It does. I've got some questions. Go ahead.
Okay. And so Chantel, you really see percent complete. Chantel's the only one we really have anything complete. River Street, there is progress, but the progress has been with Appalachian Power stringing the fiber. It's not actually getting homes connected at this point. And so that's why those are still zero, because the middle mile fiber has been strung. And so as an example, the Dickinson portion of going down Snow Creek Road, they've put in about 22 and 1/2 miles of fiber. But the next step is River Street has to splice that fiber, and they have to extend it to the individual households off of that middle mile fiber. There's construction on the Sago Route was started in October, and they put in about 7.64 miles were completed. And so now, again, with that 7.6 miles, now River Street has to take it and extend it to the individual homes from the main line. Construction on the 24 miles in Indicott was expected to start in December, but that, some of that was delayed due to storm work. And so it should be started. If it's not already started, it should be very close to starting in Indicott. And then finally, there's about 20 and 1/2 miles in Ingramsville that is supposed to start in late January. And so again, those are, that's a little different project because Appalachian Power is stringing the fiber first, the middle mile fiber, and then the ISP provider is pulling off of that fiber to the individual homes. So it's, that's almost a two-step process on that one, on the River Street project. But there is progress being made as far as the fiber being extended. But they're still at 0% complete because it's not really available to anybody's house at this point. Yes, sir?
When do they anticipate on beginning the work connecting the houses, or do they have to wait a certain amount of time?
Once, so the initial 22 and 1/2 miles, River Street is starting to work on that. So that, they're calling that Dickinson. So the Dickinson line, they are starting to work on that.
Is that on Route 40 coming back towards Snow Creek?
I think it's the route going down 890. That's from 40 down 890. Yeah. And so that'll be, that'll be the first area where you start to see customers getting connected is now that that fiber's been pulled. And I guess Apco pulls the fiber, and then they kind of have to release it for River Street to go ahead and start utilizing that. And so that's where we are with that one. So I don't, it's not really that there's a certain amount of time, but once they complete their work, Apco does, then River Street can come in and start doing their work.
But they have not connected anyone yet?
Not as of, not as of yet, yeah. So, but they are starting that process of extending it from the, from that main fiber line.
Mr. Sandy, just a quick question, if I may. Of all of the partners that we have, are there addresses that are not included in any of our grant funding that are underserved or unserved outside of these funded connections?
Yes. So you heard a number earlier about 2,500. That's about what we're looking at, is 25, approximately 2,500 that are left, and that's the BEED funding. And so we're anticipating that all of those properties should be funded through the BEED program for people to connect to. And so that's, that's really the process the state went through of finding out, okay, these are the ones we've already funded. These are the ones that already have service, what's left. And so we worked with the state to identify that. And they've had to do that for every county across the state. But yeah, our numbers, I can't quote you the exact number, but it's approximately around 2,500 that we're saying are still, don't fall in any of these grant programs and can get funding through the BEED program.
Are any of the other vendors interested in picking those up? Or, okay.
Yeah, so I think what we're probably going to see is a combination, just like we've always had, is there's a lot of addresses that would be near River Street's system that they're building. And there's going to be a lot of addresses that are near Chantel's system that they're building. So it makes economic sense for them to go ahead and try to get those through the BEED program. And then Zytel as well. And then you'll see, as you heard from Comcast, you know, other folks that come in for that competition and trying to pick up some of those, you know, some of those remaining 2,500. So when those applications get made to the state, the state is really going to evaluate who's got the best kind of bang for the buck to get those last households connected. And so I think that's really what they're going to be looking at, who has the most competitive pricing and for getting the most people served. And we've said it before, and it's the same is true here, is when you get to those last ones, those are usually the most expensive ones too and the hardest ones to get to. And so
So with BEED being our federal program, are they going to be the ones watching for redundancy in our networks here, or do we need to be watching for redundancies? How is that going to work, since it really doesn't go through us?
Yeah, so that's how they came up with that number that they'll fund, is that those, they've identified that they either have service or don't have service, and those are the remaining ones that still need that service. And so that's how they base their funding formula. And, you know, so somebody like Comcast, for instance, may come in, and they may build to, let's just say, 3,500 homes, but they're only going to get funded for 25 if they hit all those 25 that are still needed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I know we had that hiccup two years ago probably now, where we had some redundancy, and it had to be reconciled.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was, goes back to where they changed the definition of broadband, kind of midstream.
Yep, yep.
So that, this is a start. So this chart, obviously, as we start to see those River Street connections, we'll start to see where those numbers are not zero anymore and those are connected. Zytel is still zero because probably within about 20 minutes or so, you'll actually approve their contract so they can, with the state, so they can officially get started. They have been doing work, Zytel, with some engineering and some ordering of supplies and materials, but they're not allowed to start construction until we have that grant agreement with the state. And so as soon as the approval's made today, we'll get Mr. Whitlow's signature on it, and we'll get that back to the state so they can turn it around to us, and we can get that project going as well. I know they're anxious to get going as well. And then again, we can start kind of filling in the columns there. This is the, just kind of the monthly update from Chantel, and I won't go through all of it. I will just point out a couple. You know, so this, this kind of shows the different areas they're working in, and these are the different project areas. And if you kind of see, they kind of started in purple, they moved to the red area, they're moving to the orange, which is kind of the Callaway area. Same as started in purple, kind of came through the gray, and they're going to the blue area, which is the Blue Ridge area, which kind of shows why those areas are kind of being last to be connected. It's just the way the system is, and they're working off their existing network. The other pages just kind of show how many they've released to sales and which aspects are under construction. It's on page 11, I think, is still, as Mr. Quinn brought up earlier, the issue is still the make-ready work. The delays that we're still seeing are because of needing those AEP permits to be able to do those aerial expansions. We have done a few things there where we've worked with AEP to try to figure out some solutions to this. They are hiring a new project manager to facilitate and help kind of manage this whole thing across their whole network. Hopefully, that'll lead to better coordination and seeing things move more expeditiously. There's also another third-party contractor that they've added. So now they have nine crews across three counties, which is, for us, is primarily us, Bedford and Campbell. So we've got nine crews working in those areas. So we've tried to make some headway there and try to break that logjam with the permitting. And that's, we'll see, hopefully, the next meeting we have, I can report some increases after this new project manager gets on board, and hopefully, we'll see some things break through. The final page, on page 13, is, it's a little hard to see, but it kind of just gives you an idea of the scatter shot, if you will, of houses. So all those green dots represent houses that are part of that 5,243 addresses that addresses that Shentel's going to reach through the grant program. Whether it's the green or the orange, it's either the twenty-one or twenty-two grant program. And so, when you look at that list of the total number of addresses, that's, those two correlate, those two relate to each other. I'll mention, just quickly, the Virginia Make-Ready Initiative, the program where the state had authorized thirty million dollars to help with that logjam with permitting. And so, what that was envisioned to do was, any of those projects that were using the federal ARPA money and in jeopardy of meeting the project deadline, it was an infusion of some additional money to pay any additional costs that were related to pole replacements that may be needed, but also to potentially redesign portions of the project to go from aerial to underground to eliminate some of those permitting issues. And so, we have worked with Shentel on a couple of those items. The first one was a small, small application, really, just for some additional costs that they experienced through pole replacements. The second one was really redesigning a portion of the Faram area project to move it from aerial to underground, and that one will be on the board's agenda at three o'clock to approve. And then, we submitted a third one with them for just some additional modifications that they've made to the, to the project, to, again, all of this is hopefully to streamline it and get the project across the finish line in time. So, we're continuing to work with them on that. One final thing I'll mention, and I'll ask Carly to come up and give her a brief presentation on the Virginia Affordability and Adoption Planning Grant. So, the other thing with the bead funding is the federal government has not only provided money for deployment of broadband, but also access. And so, what Carly will talk about, come on, Carly.
Steve, I have one question just before she starts regarding access. So, when they go down a road, or they go into a neighborhood, are they required to bring the fiber to everybody's house? And if not, is there a rule of thumb? I know that you talked about there are a certain number of customers that won't be served in this batch, and are those whole neighborhoods? Or, say you go down a road, and a person's a mile off the road, you're not required to bring it all the way to their house? So, they're kind of, they're left behind for the time being? What's the rule when they go down a road? Who do they serve and who do they not serve?
So, there's a couple of answers there for us. One goes back to what Lori had brought up, is some addresses we had to exclude in some of our previous grant applications, because the state determined they were already served through the wireless network. So, we had to exclude them from our grant, and so, we got funded, we didn't get funding to catch those houses. The next year, they changed the definition, and they said, oh, never mind, you can now apply for funding for those. Well, we did, and we didn't get it. So, that created a little bit of an issue for us, and so, the short answer to that is, if they're, if they're within a couple hundred feet, they'll automatically be picked up. The general rule of thumb is about eighteen hundred feet from the line that they must connect to that address. But to your point, if someone has a mile-long driveway, and they're not part of the grant, there's not an obligation for the company to make that extension a mile down the driveway. What, the state did pass another program, which is called LECAP, which is the Line Extension Program. And so, in some of those cases where those driveways have been long, or those people have been far away from the line, and they found out their cost was twelve thousand dollars, we've been able to go through that LECAP program, and that provides kind of the additional money needed to connect that residence. So, generally, though, the, it's about eighteen hundred to two thousand feet from the line is they're kind of obligated to connect those.
Steve?
Yep?
I got a question too, before you.
Sure.
I had a call this morning from a Mr. Bowman there, and he's over, I was looking on your map, where it shows a cabinet at Boones Mill.
Okay.
From his driveway, you can throw a rock to that. And he owns a dairy farm there, and down, his address is two seventy Belmont Lane, there's three homes down there. They talked to Shentel, he said, back in the spring, lined everything up for connection and all like that. They came down, they hooked to the barn in September, and they called out of business, okay? And they told them they'd come back and do the other connections on their homes. Didn't come back, November, he talked, kept calling, this is what they're telling me. An engineer came out and told them that the county told the owner not to hook up the houses because they did not pay. Is this something, they got to make another application to Shentel? Does this sound anything reasonable?
I know exactly which property you're talking about, but I don't remember that conversation.
What, what have they got to do?
I'll circle back with Shentel on that, because I know exactly which property you're talking about.
Okay.
Because we had a lot of conversations about that property, because they also want to upgrade their milking barn and their...
Well, I understand, you know, they got the connection there at the barns, working great, they're satisfied with it.
Yeah, and the houses are right there, so I'll, they should get connected, the houses should get connected.
He was a little upset. He said, we pulled, we pulled their trucks out of our fields when they were stringing all, you know, everybody.
Okay.
Let me know back if you get it.
I didn't know there was an issue there, but I'll...
Thank you.
Anybody have any further questions before we hear from Carly? Statements, concerns? Okay.
Great, and so, there's another program that's providing some funding for a planning grant, and Carly has been gracious to kind of take the lead on this, and she put together the application and was successful, and so, and the best part of all is they're no local match, it's all state funding. And so, I just asked her if she would come and give you kind of a brief overview of that program and what it looks like. And again, we're kind of moving away from getting the wire to the house to some other kind of adoption accessibility type things with the broadband network that we now have in place, so, thank you.
Carly, welcome, we're so glad to see you.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Franklin County has been awarded the Virginia Broadband Affordability and Adoption Planning Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And first off, thank you all for your continued leadership and commitment to improving broadband access across the county. Your strategic investments have truly moved the needle in expanding availability, and now with this grant, we have the chance to take it a step further by focusing on broadband adoption and making sure that our residents and businesses have access and can use the infrastructure that you've worked so hard to put into place. This grant also positions us for future funding opportunities by creating a community broadband grant. Today, there's no action required by the authority, but the Board of Supervisors will be asked to take action later today. For some background, the Virginia Broadband Authority, I mean, Affordability and Adoption Planning Grant is administered by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, and it provides funding to municipalities to conduct needs assessments, identify priorities, and develop actionable plans to address digital opportunity within their communities. With a twenty-five thousand dollar award, we'll bring together a cross-departmental planning committee, including representatives from Economic Development, the Franklin Center, Social Services, Public Libraries, Parks and Recreation, and GIS. And then, over the next six months, this team will work with various community partners like STEP, Franklin County Public Schools, and local businesses to better understand the needs of our residents, and will conduct surveys of our residents, do a couple community forums, and to, all that will be to gather input. And then, one of the most exciting pieces that we'll be launching is a pilot digital literacy program, which will help address the skills gap and ensure that residents can fully benefit from broadband access. So, by August twenty-twenty-five, we'll have a community broadband plan that reflects the voices of our community, identifies specific challenges, and lays out solutions to bridge the digital divide. And this plan won't just help our community thrive today, but most importantly, it will really position us for future state and federal dollars to continue the important work. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Authority members, Mr. Carter?
I don't really have a question. Carly, just want to thank you for all your hard work on this and getting a grant, that's quite an accomplishment, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Quinn?
So, I was surprised, I can't remember which provider it was, but they discussed how many people didn't sign up. I seem to recall they had a thirty percent sign-up rate, and I was just so shocked that only thirty percent, you now have broadband access at your house, and only thirty percent are taking advantage of it. So, I can't, I can't help but think that it's financial, and families can't afford it. And so, will any part of this twenty-five thousand go to supplementing their bills so they can afford, or is this all like preliminary planning work, and none of the money will help anybody actually get connected?
Yes, so this is more of a planning grant, and then hopefully, with future funding, that could come down the pipeline, that could be an option.
Is that thirty percent number, based on what you've seen, is that still, is that a pretty good number? I know in certain areas, you're going to have higher and lower, but is that a good average number that people, once they bring the fiber in and they bring it to the house, you're getting about a thirty percent connection rate?
It feels closer to forty or fifty now. I think some of those people had other options that they were contractually obligated to, so they couldn't switch right away. So, I think over time, you'll start to see more people kind of take advantage of the service, so whether it was satellite or some other service that they were bound to in to the contract or something. So, I think that was some of it, but then, I think the other piece that we hope to find out here is how much of it is an affordability issue as well. And then, there is additional bead money, bead money that's out there, that, once we can get a plan in place and show where we need those additional dollars, it would be that other funding that we'll have to, we'll have to apply for, so we'll have the opportunity to apply for some of that additional funding.
Yep. You good, Mr. Quinn?
Good, thank you.
Any other authority members have questions?
Carly, I, are you confident that next steps on deliverables are going to be designed and doable? I mean, I just am never a proponent of studying things to death, and then, nothing being actionable.
No, I think there's definitely opportunity. We have a great team in place that will be able to work on it from different perspectives, so that'll be exciting, but also just the opportunity for future funding would help take these actionable items to the next level.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, and you guys certainly have no other questions? Carly, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your due diligence on this.
I'll just add to that, one thing, we are, we do seem to be making progress on the cellular front, so we've talked about that before, and it's one of our legislative agendas, is that the Department of Housing and Community Development is planning to use some of that bead money to be able to develop a program for increased cellular deployment to get more antennas put up. So, there's actually a work group starting next week, and so, they've actually asked me to be part of the stakeholder group and to help kind of work through the application requirements and the funding requirements for that. So, good news, I think that seems to be moving forward, and so, we'll start to make some headway on that, hopefully, and they'll have a program out within, you know, six months or so to actually sell, sale companies can apply, and then put up additional sites. And so, I've offered for Franklin to be a pilot project, if they need us to kind of be the frontrunner, so we'll see, we'll see what happens, but good news is, it seems to be moving forward, and I think it's moving forward even without having to have any legislative action. I think it's going to make its way through, and the federal government has already said they would allow the dollars to be spent for that. So, again, all that seems to be good news and moving that aspect forward as well.
So, Steve, is there anything that we need to do as an authority, or as a Board of Supervisors, to lay any codified language down regarding cellular, maybe as a caveat to our, I mean, not cellular, excuse me, to our broadband ordinances? Do we need to lay?
I don't think so, at this point. What I can do is just provide some updates when we meet, next time we meet, and just kind of keep you guys apprised, but at this point, I don't think it's anything we'll need to do on our end necessarily now. If we do get into placing new poles, you know, we may need to look at, you know, how, do we want to expedite requests for those, or, you know, what kind of criteria do we have for those? But I think, for us personally, I think we've got enough existing structures, that if we can just start to get some antennas on a number of those existing structures, that's going to really kind of move us forward, and that's, that's really the low-cost option anyway, is just adding antennas to existing structures. So, as we work through it, we'll see if there's any need for changes to the ordinances.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephen, do keep us apprised on that. Do you have anything else, Mr. Sandy? Okay, are there any other matters? Mr. Mitchell?
Steve? Any update on Verizon at Snow Creek as of this morning? There was still no service there, so...
I should have known you were going to ask me, I should have checked today, but I did not check today, so I'll follow up though.
I know, that's going, they promised us that, that's been over a year now. But, and I just want to make a quick point, I'm no mathematician. So, if you take, the Snow Creek District has two-hundred-and-sixty-five total Shentel addresses at eight-point-three percent completion. Puts me at twenty-two people being connected. And for the amount of years that this money's been coming down, I just find that, I don't know why I come to these meetings for twenty-two people. Just making that point. Thank you.
Steve, do you have any comment to that, other than the geographical approach?
Yeah, I mean, that's really my answer, is it's just they haven't reached them yet, same as Faram, they're just, they're kind of at the end of their line, so to speak, and so, they just haven't gotten there yet.
Sorry, Nat.
Is what it is.
I know, I know. It can't be soon enough, Mr. Sandy. Are there any other issues that the authority members would like to bring before this body? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the broad authority meeting.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Tatum? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you all for your time this afternoon. We'll take a very brief break before three o'clock.
It's good to see some that haven't seen for a while, and I'm glad that you're here and for your interest in county government. At this time, I'm going to ask Supervisor Smith, Vice Chair Lori Smith, if she'll open in the invocation, and Supervisor Marshall Jamison, if he'll lead in the pledge. Let's all stand, please, as we do this.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see such a good crowd here today. If you bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you today for another blessed day on this planet, and we pray, dear Lord, that, that as a new administration comes into our government, we pray for your guidance, and that our country can come together, and we can govern as one. Lord, I pray that you will be with the board today as we seek to do the work of the people of Franklin County. I pray that you would give us wisdom and courage and insight, that we can do the best jobs that we can possibly do on behalf of the businesses and citizens of Franklin County. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on all of the families represented, and that you would be with us during the course of the week. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's take a minute here for the approval of the agenda. Do we have any concerns or thoughts or any amendments to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, we got a second? All in favor, signify by, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same motion? All right, with that being said, I have the pleasure, from time to time, to recognize some people for big achievements, and I want to recognize a man at this time that has served Franklin County for several years on several different boards, not just this one particular board, but he's been on several different boards. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Cooper if he will come forth, and, there he is, there he is, if he will come forth up here to the front. And Bill, if you will excuse me, I'm just going to stay up here and not walk up and down them steps, because, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm afraid I'll fall if I go down them steps. I think it's good to be seen, and I'm glad to be back. Most of you know and may not know, it's been a while, I mean, I've been here the last two or three meetings, but I was sick for a while, very, very sick, and I'm very thankful to the good Lord that I am here, and for all of the cards, the letters, but most of all, I was thankful for the prayers that will come, the article that Jason did in the paper, and all of that, and I'm sure a lot of you seen that. So, let me read this for you, Bill. It's a resolution of appreciation. It's a resolution of appreciation, whereas Virginia Western Community College, it'll be referred to as the college after this, provides quality education services and opportunities that ultimately empower its students, leading to successful futures and strong opportunities. Whereas Mr. William Cooper III was appointed to and actively served on the Virginia Western Community College Advisory Board since July of twenty nineteen and further, uh, chaired the Virginia Western Advisory Community Finance Committee in, uh, com- con- excuse me, combination with the college president, staff and board opportunities, high standards in education and contribute to the achievement of the college in its ever-changing times. Mr. Cooper valued devotion and assistance, had aided the college in providing successful futures that many college attendees throughout the years. Whereas, in addition to his service and many contributions to the college, Mr. Cooper has also served as the CEO with his family business on the regional board at BB and T Bank and on the board of the Franklin County YMCA. There he contributed unexclusively devoted hard work and county hours. Whereas Mr. Cooper has consistently demonstrated upstanding character, uh, compassionate professionalism and innovation in his efforts to help not only the Franklin community thrive and flourish with its surrounding communities through his service and work and now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors rec- recommends, recognizes and appreciates the dedication, hard work and years of superior service, uh, for Mr. Bill Cooper and his, uh, many contributions to the society of the economic, social and educational welfare of the Franklin County community and beyond.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
I tell you, being on the board of the, uh, Virginia Western was quite an experience. It is a treasure for our, our community. I love Franklin County and what they do for our children and adults is outstanding. So it's a great program. I, I really learned more about it. They taught me more than I helped them, I'll tell you. So thank y'all very much, it's quite an honor.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, sir. All right, you wanna do this? All right, we've got, we've got, uh, five more. This here is forty, uh, forty and, uh, over forty, and we've got five recipients of that. And, uh, I'm gonna ask them if they'll come up. If I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, Stephanie Matheny, Carly Foster, Daniel Pennard, Tyler Carter and Haley Simmons Evans, if you'll come up to the front. I'm gonna ask, uh, our Vice Chair, she'll read this, and, uh, I'm having a little trouble with, uh, well, I might as well go ahead and tell everybody, I'm having a little bit of trouble with my eyes. My wife's been hauling me around and I've been having a little bit of trouble with my eyes since I come out of the hospital and they gonna, uh, operate on it, uh, it's just gonna be, takes ten minutes, they said. I got cattle racks on. Anyway, they're gonna take them off and it's because of that medication I was on. So Lori, if you will read those, they're all the same, so if you just hand them out, they gonna all, they'll all get one, they're, everybody's names on the thing and I really, really, really appreciate and I'm proud of you for your efforts. Uh, you know, that's, that's forty plus forty, I mean, under forty and you're, you're already, uh, achieving awards and getting, uh, standards all in the community and I think that's really, really cool, really cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will read, uh, the resolution on, as the chair, Chairman said, this is extended to all five of you. You are making us so proud, so, so very proud with your accomplishments. So this is a resolution of appreciation, whereas the Rowan O'Keeffe Magazine annually honors a select group of young professionals through its Forty Under Forty recognition, highlighting individuals who have made significant contributions to their communities and professions. And whereas Franklin County is proud to recognize Stephanie Mathena, Carly Foster, Daniel Penyard, Tyler Carter, Haley Simmons Evans, whose leadership and achievements and dedication have brought distinction to Franklin County. And whereas Stephanie Mathena, Principal Planner for Franklin County, has played, excuse me, has played a key role in the county's development by leading the updated comprehensive plan and modernizing the zoning ordinance, ensuring a sustainable and community-driven future for Franklin County. Stephanie is also a certified planner with the American Planning Association and a dedicated volunteer with the Rowanoke County VCE Master Gardeners. Thank you, Steph. Thank you. And whereas Carly Foster, Business Retention and Expansion and Workforce Manager for Franklin County Office of Economic Development, has built strong relationships with local industries, aligned workforce development efforts with employer needs and demonstrated a deep commitment to economic growth and prosperity. Carly is an active member of the Virginia Economic Development Association and the Rotary Club of Rocky Mount. Thank you, Carly. Whereas Daniel Penyard, Cultural and Economic Development Director for the town of Rocky Mount, has driven growth and revitalization through his leadership securing major grants, fostering business development and fostering community engagement through innovative programs and events. Thank you, Daniel. And Tyler Carter, whereas Tyler Carter, Community Reinvestment Administrator for Carter Bank, empowers underserved communities, strengthens nonprofit resources and fosters positive change through leadership roles in local organizations like the Rotary Club of Rocky Mount. Thank you, Tyler. Whereas Haley Simmons Evans, Nursing Home Administrator at Rocky Mount Health and Rehabilitation Center, has demonstrated exceptional leadership in healthcare administration, regulatory compliance and mentoring future leaders while enhancing the quality of care in Franklin County. Thank you, Haley. And whereas the recognition of these individuals reflects the dedication, the innovation and leadership that make Franklin County an extraordinary place to work, live and thrive. Now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors recognizes and we congratulate Stephanie Mathena, Carly Foster, Daniel Penyard, Tyler Carter and Haley Simmons Evans for getting the selection to the Rowan O'Keeffe Magazine's Forty Under Forty Class of Twenty Twenty Five and commends their outstanding contributions to Franklin County.
That's a pretty big achievement. I remember we had several people from Kent Franklin County that obtained that award last year and I'm glad.
We're happy to represent.
Well, I'm glad you did and I'm glad you all are continuing that, uh, representation to your county in a place of where you not only live, you live, work and play and I'm happy for that and congratulations and thank you again. How about, has any of y'all got a speech?
No, we do not.
Okay. Next time then, huh?
Mr. Chairman, that is an impressive representation.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is to the county. It truly is.
And town of Rocky Mount as well.
Always a pleasure to have under forty in here with us.
Huh?
Always a pleasure to have under forty in here with us.
What are you here, you young'un? You're, you're a little young in here on the board.
Bunch of chaps in here, huh?
That's right. Goodness gracious.
All right, the consent agenda, there's some action required on this. Uh, there's eleven, eleven, eleven topics on the consent agenda, uh, so I'll ask you what's your pleasure? Is there anything needs to be discussed or talked about? Or if not, we will move forward. Anybody got anything to say about the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull number seven, Mr. Chairman.
Number seven? All right, anyone else? All right, number seven is the, uh, ambulance purchase approval. That's number seven in your book.
Mr. Chair. I'd just like, I, I have no problem with this, I, but I would like to make a point and if I get too far offline, please correct me. Um, 'cause other matters by supervisors at the very end and sometimes I feel that we lose momentum by then. Um, I think this is a step in the right direction for getting the county better off on ambulance rotation, but I am concerned with who's gonna drive them. Um, as y'all know, the money we approved a while back for Snow Creek, that building has been completed and is ready. And when I began to research, try to find out who's gonna be in it, I was, um, stunned at where we stand. Um, I have two different places in my district, Fort Mountain and Snow Creek, and I would say we're in dire straits as far as the staffing goes on those and if it's the pleasure of the rest of the board, I would love for us to have an update on that, kinda like what we received a couple of months ago from Parks and Rec, uh, with perhaps the Director of Public Safety and whoever else staff feels needs to be in it, I, I think it's something that needs to be brought to our attention. But I have no problem with it, I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. With, uh, other matters by supervisors, if you wanna bring that up again, because I have something very similar to that that I wanna bring up. So you don't have a problem with going ahead with?
I have no problem at all.
With purchases?
Yes, sir.
But we will get an update on that in our February meeting. And, and like I said, I've got some, and there may be some other supervisors here with something to bring up in other matters by supervisors.
And it might not would hurt, Mr. Chairman, if we, if we would consider moving other matters to, by supervisors to a different point in our meeting. I feel like by the end, we've all lost steam and, and, uh, there's nobody even left here to hear it.
That's a good point.
I think we, I think this board should consider moving that to a different point in our meeting.
All right, we'll talk about that too in, in a little bit, at another point, we'll, we'll bring that up. Uh, we, we may go back to what we had before if it's the pleasure of the board, when, uh, Chris, the county attorney do theirs, we'll do it all at the same time.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Anyone else got anything in, in regards to the consent agenda? So we're gonna leave, uh, number seven in there. He just wanted to bring up, and we wanted to talk about, uh, who's gonna drive them and get an, an update from Public Safety on where we're staying with, uh, with their services that we're doing or providing to our community. All right, with that being said, go for it, I'll entertain a motion for the, uh, the approval of the consent agenda and then I'll need a second. And then Madam Clerk, if you'll do a roll call vote at the conclusion of that. Who, do I have a?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And we got a, a first and a second, Madam Clerk, if you'll do a roll call.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, Mr. Cassell with VDOT, if you'll come forward, please. That's number twelve in your book. How are you doing today, sir?
I'm doing well, sir, how are you?
Fine, y'all got the snowplows out ready to take care of the?
Yes, sir, we would like to put them away.
Uh, you wanna put them away? I understand.
Pleasure to be here with you all.
I tell you what's truth, I would like for you to put them away too.
Can we just turn and dial up a little bit, get it out of thirteen degrees, maybe about thirty-five or forty would be?
I'd go, uh, mow grass and shovel snow.
I'm with you.
You with me.
Pleasure to be here before you all today. I would like to introduce you to Robin Keeler. Robin is the Assistant Residency Administrator. Uh, she fills the role that I was in, but she's certainly no stranger to VDOT or to Franklin County for that matter. Uh, thirty-year veteran plus of VDOT, she comes to us from the Salem Residency and, uh, where she filled the same role. So, uh, a nice addition to our team. Of course, Ms. Lewis is still with us there, but, uh, I wanted to introduce you to Robin so you'll see a familiar face, uh, as we come to the board meetings. With that, I'll go ahead and jump right into the board report. Looking at, uh, the previous sixty, uh, thirty days, we've got Route Six Forty, Six Mile Post, that project has been completed. That was a pipe replacement. And then, uh, jumping down to the maintenance for the next sixty days, we actually have, um, a project that's a jack and bore on Route Forty that's active. We're doing some, uh, temporary flagging here and there, uh, that project is progressing well. And then we have a project that's coming up January twenty-seventh where we will actually close Route Seven Oh Five Chestnut Hill. Uh, that's a pipe replacement. That's gonna be in advance of a bridge replacement project that we'll have, so that you'll have a period of time where the road will be closed for the pipe replacement. We'll open it back up and then there will be an extended period of time where the bridge will have the roadway closed as well. So, um, a lot of activity on Seven Oh Five there. I'll go on over to the next page and we've got, uh, Route Six Thirteen Naff Road. Mr. Jamison, we did get our speed study back, uh, they chose to not reduce the speed limit. However, they did an extensive review of the signage and so we have a lot of signs that will be replaced, uh, updated, reset, uh, many of the chevrons. Uh, they found that the speed was in compliance with the non-posted, I think it was average, uh, around fifty-three miles per hour. Um, so that's what we got back from them. And, um, next, we've got Route Twelve Ninety-One Winding Waters, we have a recommendation of, uh, twenty-five miles per hour, that'll be posted. And then, uh, I'll just jump back down as, as I've already mentioned, but the last item on here, uh, Route Seven Oh Five Chestnut Hill, the bridge replacement. We have on here that it's, uh, scheduled for February advertisement, it may be March, we've had a little bit of delay with some of the environmental clearances, but, um, that is moving forward. So with that, that can, concludes our report and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody farther down there with, Dan?
Okay. Hi, Brian. So, uh, there's a situation in, on Ivy Lane where Chintel's installing fiber and they had to create an opening right in the middle of an intersection and they, they filled a little bit of paving in, but it's probably eight to ten inches deep still and you probably can't repair it this time of year, but I just wondered, should we come to you for those issues that were created by somebody else or, or go to Chintel to make the repairs? How, how should those repairs be?
No, certainly, they would be under permit for us, so we'll, we'll make sure that they address those issues.
Okay.
Yeah, and you said it's Ivy Lane?
Yeah, it's, um, it's right in front of the coves, uh, if you know, you know where the coves?
Yes, sir.
Is, it's, it's right at that intersection. There's a stop sign and it's right there.
All right, we'll get some eyes on it and at least have them monitor it, 'cause obviously it is too cold to do any paving now, but we'll take care of it.
Mr. Tatum?
All right, thank you, Brian. Um, Brian, we have a new restaurant coming to my district called the Back Forty Barbecue. It's my understanding, right now the holdup is they're waiting on a permit from VDOT to install a pole. Is that something you could look in and see what, where we're at on that and what may be holding up?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything like that. I know that we've, uh, approved their entrance and, um, we actually did some pipe work there in that area.
I knew, uh, VDOT's done a lot of work through there and I was just wondering, uh, my understanding is they're waiting on a, a permit to allow AEP or someone to put a, a light pole or someone to put a pole up there and, uh, if you could look into that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I'll turn to Lisa and see real quick if she knows anything off top.
Yeah, Mr. Jamison emailed me the same thing this morning and I searched in my, uh, my AEP permit, it looks like they sent it at the beginning of January, so we, I'll, I'll take a look at it and get it. But he, he said we got it in November and that's not correct, we just got it at the beginning of January.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll certainly get on that.
Thank you, because, uh, we need good places to eat and, uh, I know the Jamison family and it will be very good.
You're saying you want some barbecue?
Absolutely.
Sounds like he's inviting us all to dinner.
That sounds good.
I like the barbecue.
My treat. Um, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, other than Brian. Um, thank you all very much for dealing with that culvert area there at Scruggs and, and One Twenty Two.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
Brian, I'm disappointed, uh, with the Naff Road, but, uh, what it is, what it is. But, uh, if they could come down through there at five o'clock in the afternoon, five thirty and any mornings and see the traffic going through there, it's bad, it really is.
Yeah, yes, sir. I appreciate your concerns and understand, we'll continue to monitor it, uh, if we, one of the things that you commented was we didn't really see a dramatic increase in traffic from the previous study, even though it's been a while. Um, but at least we are taking an effort to reset and freshen up a lot of the signage, so there's some benefit that did come out of it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
You want else? Brian, thank you, buddy.
Pleasure.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Happy New Year to you.
Thank y'all for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Keeler, Robin, we appreciate meeting you and look forward to working with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ryan Carter, Finance Director, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I guess the presentation's already up, looky there. So for our finance report for through December, so they're looking at six months of the fiscal year, what we would expect to see is around 50%, especially on the expenditure side, revenues fluctuate depending on timing of collection. And so, what we're seeing is pretty constant. Where we are seeing some concerns is in the property taxes. So we are seeing a softening in the collection of property taxes. And so, we're about 2.5% behind where we were at this point last year in the collection of taxes. So when you look at year-over-year averaging budget to actual, that's really where we're looking at. So when you look at almost $70 million, 2.5% is significant to the timing of our budget. And so, while we're, what we're looking at, we'll have a little more detail on some other slides later, but I want to point that out to you upfront for the very top line of general property taxes. So we're a little concerned on that, and we'll kind of talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. So on the revenues, if you remember last month, we were talking about the timing, and so because of the late Thanksgiving holiday, we did expect revenue collections to pick up in December. They did, as you can see with the blue line, they rebounded, and so that's just depending on the ability of the December 5th due date on the taxes. So categorically, to break that down for you, you can see, we do have an increase on general property taxes, and so that increase is anticipated based on the reassessment. And so, what we are seeing on some other areas, though, in other local taxes, that's basically flat, that's where sales tax, which is a large portion of our budget, is located. Also, the revenue from the state, that's up about a million and a half, and so that, but usually, state revenue is all reimbursement-based. In order to get that, we spent the money. And so, a lot of that, other than that, is just either increased cost or timing for our state revenue. So for real estate tax, you can see that we did have a good month in December, which is driving a lot of the general property taxes, as you would expect, very large, significant portion of our budget. And so, we are seeing growth year-over-year, 6.4%. That's good, we would expect some growth, again, with the reassessment. But if you notice the percent of budget, you'll notice that we are at least a half a percent behind where we were last year, and we're almost, we're 2% behind where we were, or a little over a percent behind where we were two years ago. And so, because $45 million of our budget is real estate, half a percent moves a long way. And so, what we're, we've looked at that, it's not an issue of the assessment, it's an issue of the timing of taxes. So one of the things we look at is when we project a budget, we project, we know what the assessment is going to be, we also project the collectability of that assessment. So we have, we all know you have certain, especially if you've owned a business, you have a certain amount of uncollectibility you have to balance if you're lending money. So for us, we collect the taxes, the timing as far as our budget goes is when we collect them, because we are operating on a fiscal year, so we anticipate collecting at certain point in times during the year to pay the bills. So it's assessed there, they're a little soft. I think what's going to be critical for us, probably, if I'm being honest, what happened is people decided to have Christmas instead of pay their taxes. And I perfectly understand that. So hopefully, January, February, we will start to see those collections come in, but it is, we're not panicked, but it is something we're monitoring as a point of keeping up with the concern. You're going to see similar thing on personal property. So year-over-year, we're up only $333,000 this point in time last year, and so that's about 2% growth, which is great, we would prefer growth over reduction, but we've had double-digit growth in personal property. So what we're seeing is just the normalization. I don't think that's unusual. What we're seeing in other localities that have started to give budget presentations and talk about their numbers is we're seeing that as well, especially in this region of the state. You're just seeing the normalization of really, this is back to the growth levels of where we were pre-COVID. And so, but the, we're a little bit better than real estate, if you notice the percent of budget, we're at 92%. And so, we were over last year at 102% at this time of year, we were 89% two years ago, so we're ahead of that. But I think for us, based on the collections and where we'd anticipate to be between now and the remaining six months of the fiscal year, it's going to be something we monitor to collect on the budget. And so, that's our, that's our property taxes, that's kind of what we're seeing right now, they're softer than they have been on the collection side for a while. Okay? Our sales taxes, we-
Brian, I have a question on the property tax.
Yes.
So with a business, you recognize revenue when you invoice, but I think what you're getting at is, here, we recognize invoice when we receive the cash from the customer, right?
That's correct.
And so, you're short, you've invoiced everything, however, you're short because you haven't collected, and because people are paying slower than they used to, or have in the past, right?
Yes, sir.
Slower than you predicted they would.
When we look at the reports from the Treasurer's Office on, and compare to this point in time last year of what was assessed and what was collected as a percentage of that tax levy, you're correct, yes, sir. We've collected less at this point in time, through December, through the end of December this year, than we did last year as part of, as far as a percentage of the tax levy. Yes.
So if you look at what you invoiced, that would be on budget, but when you look at what you collected, that's where you're short, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, yes, sir. It's not an assessment issue, and so, but I think for us, it's gauging that timing of the collectability. Yes, sir.
Brian, does your office or the Treasurer's Office have a way of breaking down and us being able to see where these collections are falling short, what category?
That would be the Treasurer's Office. I would have to lend to them on their system, as far as like residential or commercial, or-
Residential, where at in the county, business.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful information for us going forward.
Absolutely, yeah, we only see it in the aggregates of any of that detail, we'd have to try and get out of their system. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Brian, when would you expect to see, what would the correction period, rebound period be if, in fact, hypothetically, this was a holiday-based issue for families? Would you think we would start seeing some upward shift in February or by March at the latest?
Yes, ma'am. We would really think in that 60 to 90-day window. I think, one, you recover, but also, you file your taxes, and so hopefully, people are receiving tax refunds. And so, at some point, second notices will go out by the end of the month, this month, January. And so, at some point, those taxes will be paid or liens will be put on as the Treasurer works through the progression of the notices. But usually, what we see, and this is not atypical, when we, for, especially for taxes we collect once a year, we never collect 100% of the budget by the end of December. We usually have another 2% or 3% to collect for the remaining six months of the fiscal year. So it's not atypical, what's atypical is the amount that we have to collect in the remaining six months of the fiscal year.
Our families have just, we've all been under duress-
Sure.
-with, you know, the cost for electricity and groceries and everything else.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, all of this is compounding, and I have a lot of empathy, especially around the holiday season, for our families.
Yes, ma'am. Completely understand where citizens are at and what they're struggling with, think we've all seen it, and so-
Brian, do you have any feel for, is this something atypical to Franklin County? Have you talked to any other finance directors or other counties experienced in this type of lag in collection? I'm just curious if this is unique to us.
I haven't talked to other localities about the lag, I have talked to other localities about their projected growth next year, and so, they're seeing what we're seeing. They're seeing a contraction of taxes and a slowdown in growth. But I have not, Mr. Carter, spoken specifically about the collectability. Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll see you shortly in that budget meeting.
Would you like the rest of it, or was that enough?
No, if you've got more, go ahead.
Okay, I'll breeze through them, Mr. Chairman. Sales tax, we're seeing similar, we saw a little bit of a slowdown this past month. So remember, it's two months behind, because it's collected by the state and returned to us. So Ms. Smith, to your earlier question, February is going to be critical for us, because that's December sales, that we would expect to determine whether we're going to meet our sales tax budget for the year. We're at 54%, well, we are above where we would want to be this time of year, we should expect that spike, as you can see on the graph here. January some, but February's going to be the big increase. But right now, we're down about 2.5%, $110,000 where we were at this point in time last year on sales taxes. Mills taxes had a slight increase, a little over $10,000, 1.2%, but we did have a nice December collection window. Transit occupancy, similar, it's 5% growth, which is good, we're doing well as far as where we would expect on the budget. Small dollar amount, only $13,000 year-over-year. Okay, so expenditures, we did see, we usually see an increase in December, I want to be clear on that, because this is general fund only, the December expenditures show our transfers to other funds. And so, I don't want to get into the weeds of the accounting side of that, but that's not necessarily checks we wrote, that's moving money for debt service or for capital or for other items or for the school system. So it just, we wait for the peak cash collection for us to move that money. So I just want, that's not actual checks going out the door, that's accounting entries that's driving that spike, and that's why you see it historically. Okay. Expenditures, categorically, you can see pretty much level, not a lot of spikes, see a little bit of public safety, we would expect that with the increases, and that's mostly where the personnel lie when you look at an overall budget. Health and welfare's been pretty level, no real concerns there right now. The fund balance has not been really unchanged, we updated it for all of the rollovers and the approvals that have occurred to this point. Still accounting for the school year-end surplus, still looking at that. But right now, we have about $19.5 million over our 20% minimum on our unassigned fund balance. Still have the million in budget stabilization in the Capital Reserve. And so, economic, national economics and the state budget update, we have a little bit more in our budget work session later. CPI increased again in December, 2.9%, core inflation 3.2%, just a little bit higher when you exclude food and energy. Unemployment rate dropped a little bit to 4.1% in December. The Federal Reserve did meet, they dropped their benchmark rate a quarter of a percentage point, so their target range now is 4.25, 4.5%. And so, our LJP is right around there, when I looked this morning, is 4.4 was our interest rate on our earnings. So the next meeting is the end of January for the Open Market Committee. The comments really lend to a lot of uncertainty, so the original plan was to draw, reduce the interest rate fairly significantly over the next course of the calendar year. Right now, with the uncertainty of what may happen with new administration, inflation still being stubborn, I think the Fed is probably going to take a more cautious approach as we go through this calendar year. But all things that we're trying to estimate when it comes time for planning for interest rate and investment earnings, all of those things as we look at the budget process. The Governor did propose his fiscal year 2026 budget, and so, really, the items that will impact that, it did continue the 3% cost of living increase for state-supported positions, so for our constitutional offices, social services, and then our public school systems, the SOQ, Standards of Quality, positions. In order to match that, of course, we as a locality would have to fund the difference for all the other positions. And of course, it's new, this is a short assembly session, because this is the second year of the two-year budget window that the state performs, and so, it's only a 30-day General Assembly session. So probably the next 30, 45 days, we'll have an idea of what comes out of the General Assembly, see how that impacts localities, and then we'll be able to have a better idea of funding for education and local government in general and what that looks like. So that's it. Be happy to answer any other questions, if there are any.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it covered.
Uh huh.
Okay. All right, I should have done this a minute ago, and I let things get ahead of me. I'd like to take just a second here to recognize a guest with us today. We have with us the Rocky Mount Town Manager, Robert Wood. Robert, if you'll stand up, where are you at? There you are. Did he already leave? I'm John Brown. I missed him. Well, he was here earlier, and I guess he was here with a couple of his employees, and I hate that he's gone, but I wanted to make sure that I recognized him as being him, he was here today. So if any of y'all see him, tell him that we do appreciate him coming and dropping by with it. All right, so next on our agenda is Virginia Western, Virginia, Western Virginia Water Authority. I bet that's not the first time, Mike, that that's been put that way. So Mr. McAvoy, if you'll come and give us a little update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's good to see you again.
Thank you, it's good to be here.
Members of the board, thank you for the time today. I'm going to do something I typically haven't done with y'all, and that's primarily talk sewage. So we generally, when I'm here, I'm talking a lot about water projects, but today, this is about wastewater, so I'm going to go ahead and get right into it. Let's see here, get that to move. All right, so I think y'all have seen this graphic before, it kind of just shows our facilities in the county. I do want to point out that the transition with the Faram Water and Sewer Authority is going well, with the exception of the rural development folks in the Department of Agriculture, they have still not signed off on the transition of the debt from Faram to us. But we continue to work on that, so that one's about the only issue there, otherwise, we've, the transition has gone quite smoothly, so. Over on the right-hand side of your screen, you see the water sources we have in the county, but really, today, again, I want to highlight our wastewater plants. You know, we have a plant in Wertz, we have one in Westlake, Lake Watch, Bridgewater Plant, we're hoping to acquire someday, Boones Mill, and a plant in Faram, so. Let's see here, okay. So kind of summary today of what I'd like to talk about, first, update on Summit View and our improvements planned in the 220 corridor. Again, talk a little bit about the Bridgewater Plant acquisition. We have some work to do in the Westlake area, and then primarily, the reason I'm here today is actually to talk to you about the sewer study we did in the Southlake area. Y'all know that we're finishing up a water treatment plant there, pretty much all the facilities are in, we're just going through testing right now, to make sure the treatment plant is working as required. We actually have interest in five customers to hook up, so we're kind of excited about that. Plant's not in service yet, but we're getting close. So we did this sewer study in the north 220 corridor near Summit View, completed in 2024, and I think you all have seen a presentation on this before. This kind of went from Boones Mill down to Rocky Mount, and this is kind of the first of these kind of sewer studies we did, and then, you know, again, I'm going to talk to you later a little bit about the Union Hall plan, and we, of course, have done a lot of work over the years in the Westlake area, and so, just want you to feel confident that we are paying attention to these potential commercial development areas in the county. With regard to Summit View, Chris has probably mentioned to you that, you know, very excited, got a grant from the state, from Economic Development Office, for $5.5 million to extend that forest main from where we currently have it ending right now at the outskirts of town of Rocky Mount. Currently, that forest main goes from Summit View, there's two lift stations there, runs all the way down 220, all that's been constructed, and it's not in operation, because we just don't have enough flow at Summit View yet, but it's currently tied to a lift station, the Altus Mill Station in the town of Rocky Mount. This next phase, as you can see on the screen here, will add almost another 7,000 feet of forest main, and it's really intended to increase the capacity at the Summit View Business Park. And what we're working on right now, the first phase of that is actually, I wish the folks from the town were here, because they've been really cooperative, we're actually analyzing the town sewer system to see how much capacity is available in their pipes to get to their wastewater plant. I think y'all are aware that, you know, there was an agreement reached recently to up the county's capacity at that plant, but we still have to get it from, you know, point up the county's capacity at that plant, but we still have to get it from, you know, point A to point B, and we're relying on the pipes in the town to make that happen for us. So right now, we're doing a study, we've installed some flow meters. We have CCTV to a good portion of the main that we want to tie this new forest main to. Our engineering team is analyzing that right now and constructing a computer model of that to see, we feel confident we'll be able to increase the capacity at Summit View from the current 110,000 gallons a day to 250, but we expect, you know, that the town may be able to accommodate a lot more. So that's really the point of this first phase of the study. In addition to that, we're finishing up the design for the actual construction, hoping to go to bid on that in February, and we expect to get that construction to be completed in the end of 2025. So that project's moving along very nicely. And again, there's really a lot that has to do with the cooperation we're getting from the town. Bridgewater Plant, this is kind of becoming like my white whale, I feel like a-ha on this one. So we've been working on this thing for like a year. I've instructed our attorney to tell all the other attorneys that we're done talking, and they can either sign the agreement or not, because it's just kind of, it just keeps going in circles. There's five parties to this agreement, and, but I think finally we're close. I'm hoping to close on it soon, but it has extended quite longer than we would have thought.
I'm sure they know Mrs. Smith is not happy.
Yeah.
I'm boiling point.
So, yes, you know, it's, again, quite, there's four property owners, plus the condo association does have to release an easement for us, but the four parties, the other three besides us, you know, they all have their own interests, I'll just say that, and they're all trying to protect their own interest, and so it's been quite a lengthy negotiation here.
Mike, if I may, are negotiations still ongoing, or have we reached closure on the negotiations?
So we thought we had a final agreement, and then two of the parties objected to some of the terms. So again, I've instructed our attorney just to say, this is the last, we're not negotiating any more changes, so we're going to set a date, and they can, be it that location, sign it or not, it's kind of how we're.
I'm with you.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. So we're getting there. I can see the spout on the horizon there. The Northlake, or, I'm sorry, Westlake Lift Station, North Lift Station, Scott Kroll's here today in the back, and he's been working on this one. I think you all know, a few months back, I think we even approached you all about getting a special use permit for this lift station site. You know, we've negotiated back almost six months ago, a purchase agreement with the current property owner. There's two things that are kind of holding this project up. One is the property owner, let's see, I'm trying to think, we'll get away, say this delicately, owes you all a little bit of money, and so there's some tax issues that are trying to be worked out there. The second one is that we are going to need to add some money to the funding of the construction of this plant. So we're looking at this in conjunction with the, doing some upgrades to the Westlake wastewater treatment plant, and we're going to probably put those projects together and work on those at the same time. So we actually expect to start construction on this sometime in the late fall, or we're going to get in budget some money in the upcoming fiscal year to finish this project off, and then kind of get construction underway, hopefully late fall, so. And again, we're expecting this to be about $1.2 million project. Same time, we're looking at the Westlake Plant, I think you all are aware, there's been some activity, development interest in Westlake, both commercial and multifamily, residential. So we're looking at the plant, right now, the plant has capacity to accommodate these new developments, but we need to look at the next phase. And so we're currently undertaking a preliminary engineering report to figure out what we're going to need to do, upgrade the treatment plant and add some capacity there. The plant site, you know, fortunately, there's 57 acres at the plant site, so there's plenty of room for additional drain fields, so disposal capacity is not an issue, but we are concerned we're getting to the end of our treatment capacity. So we don't have any cost estimates for this plant yet, but, you know, I'm thinking this is a, you know, anywhere from $3 to $5 million project for us. Likely, we'll be looking at probably some debt issuance to add this, plus the lift station I just talked about.
Mike, is the lift station going to influence the development that we're anticipating?
So the lift station's really to accommodate development on the north side of 122. Everything else is on the south side so far that I'm aware of, and that'll go through the existing lift station there. But we, you know, there is some interest in, we're seeing on the north side, actually, we kind of saw that as developing first, so this project on the south side was a little bit of a surprise, but again, there's capacity there, but, you know, we have a growing customer base there, both commercial and multifamily, so it's, I think we're running about 25,000 to 30,000 gallons per day at that plant. That plant's designed for about 50,000 gallons per day, so we need to start looking to upgrade at that facility. Also, the plant itself is, it's not that old, it was built in, I want to say 2006, we acquired it in 2008, but it is starting to get some age on it, it's almost 20 years old, you know, 18 years old, so want to do some, just some general maintenance activities there. We hope to get this report done in March of 2025, so that'll really inform us about how much cost the upgrades we'd like to do out there will be.
So Mike, if I may ask one more question, Mr. Chair. With regard to this March reporting period, are you all, or when do you guys need to know when, because I'm expecting other development through that corridor there, and one might be significant with regard to infrastructure pressures. So are you all in the loop, or how do we pull you and make sure that you are in the loop through our staff perhaps, or how does that work?
Yeah, through the staff traditionally. A lot of times, we'll get direct contact from developers.
Okay.
And let us know what's going on. You know, there's two or three that have been talked about for a couple of years now that really haven't gone anywhere, that we're kind of thinking might someday go there. And then again, there's some interest directly across, you know, from the property of the plant right now, Alexander Boones Development, so, you know, we expect that one to take off. But certainly, if you've got any other ones out there, you know, let me know. So, you know, that's exciting. So finally, the real reason I'm here today is to give you a little preview of the sewer improvements that could happen at Southlake. Again, we're finishing up the water treatment facilities there. We have some interest in customers near the plant that would like to hook up, and we undertook a study to look at the sewer issues out there, and I believe Supervisor Quinn has a working group that's kind of looking at development issues in general down there, so this kind of dovetails nicely together. Some of the, you can see some of the design assumptions we made there, you know, we looked at three levels of development out there that might use up capacity. So the first one, that SETI development, 30K in 10 years, that kind of replicates what we saw at the Westlake Plant. And then you could get something quick, again, some, maybe primarily, I would think multifamily units were to locate there, that would probably drive that number, and then a slow development period where you only might get to 30,000 gallons in 20 years. And again, we're looking at a design flow of 60,000 gallons a day. That actually kind of matches up well with the water treatment capacity of the plant, which is, you know, roughly in the mid 70, 70,000 gallons a day, so. So what our design team looked at is, we took the Southlake, the Union Hall Village Plan overlays, and looked at the kind of expected zoning and density things from that plan, and then kind of worked out just some infrastructure costs. And what you're seeing on this first map here is essentially a treatment plant at the current property we own where the water treatment plant is. So we're looking, co-locate a wastewater plant on the same property. It would have drain fields. We would construct a gravity main along 220, or I'm sorry, Route 40, to a lift station, then pump it back to the plant. For purposes of just pricing this out and making just some general assumptions, we put that lift station at the opposite end of the Union Hall Plan for the mixed-use development areas and from the wastewater plant, so we could basically cover that corridor that you see and outlined in the blue on the screen. And, but it could, depending on how properties develop, you could put that lift station wherever it makes sense, at a low spot, you could put the wastewater plant, there's a big parcel next door to where the parcel we own, that traditionally had been looking at for, you know, has, had been looked at over the years for large commercial development. You know, ideally, that'd be great if an anchor customer were to come in there, and there's lots of property associated with that site, that might make more sense to put the wastewater plant there, you know, work with the developer on that, so. So this is just kind of a schematic to give you an idea of what it might look like, and there's a significant amount of area that you could serve, so, you know, it's pretty exciting. It's expensive, as you can see the number here, it's almost $7 million, and there's no funding right now for that. But we did complete the study, and I believe our staff is going to be talking to the working group that's working on that next week. Again, because we don't have any funding available and no customer interest yet, there's really no construction completion date at this time. This is kind of a bigger view of the system, and one reason we like the kind of moving along the Route 40 corridor is that you can build off that quite extensively and continue to move out into the Union Hall area. So you can see some, you know, additional gravity mains here, another pump station or two, depending, again, what type of development might go in here. A lot of this would be built by developers, this kind of second round of infrastructure, we would hope it would be picked up by developers as they develop the properties, you know, for, again, whatever type, and again, we were expecting this would be commercial or Any questions about that? I know I went through that pretty quick.
I'll just make a, so it's really exciting that you have completed the study. You referenced the Union Hall Village Working Group, and one of the things they did, and this is for the benefit of the board too, we had a meeting of developers and builders, it was almost exactly a year ago, but we had over 40 people come in, and we talked about, we were, the main purpose was to find out what would you need to invest in the Union Hall area? And the biggest thing for them was sewer, and the sewer was very tightly linked to doing any kind of affordable housing, and so we're always talking about affordable housing, and how do you come up with more affordable housing? And it seems like this is, that your sewage capability is the starting point for any affordable housing, and from their perspective, it just wouldn't get started without this, so that was, it's interesting that we're at least, we've completed a study on it, for sure. And then I saw the slides, I think they were in the Friday packet, Chris, and it talked about how you already own the land that would be the footprint for this, right?
Correct. So let's see, yeah, I guess it shows up. So we own this parcel right here, and that's where the existing water treatment plant is being constructed, and the tank, the elevated storage tank that's out there, it's roughly 18 acres, so there's plenty of room to put another treatment plant, this, in this case, would be a wastewater plant, and we actually think maybe some drain fields on that property. We still have to have the soils tested, so we have not done the soil investigation yet to see if it's suitable. However, again, I think the property next door, where we kind of would hope an anchor customer would go, that parcel seems to have some excess property, might be able to, you know, we might be able to work some kind of arrangement there to have the drain fields located on that property if the soils aren't good on our property.
I know, so that was very interesting that you owned the property, because that's a whole nother hurdle to try to acquire a property, right? And yet you have it. And so then, I just wondered, as you look out, what would you expect would be the most likely sources of funding? Do you assist with that at all, or do you, is this the end of your effort?
No, I think, so again, as I mentioned, we're going to be doing some funding in the Westlake area, again, you know, probably four to six million dollars over the upcoming next two years. So we probably won't be trying to devote any funding to this anytime soon. Ideally, this might be something that is jointly funded, or maybe even a kind of a three-way arrangement between us, the county, and a developer, again, on that one large parcel. You know, if this was just, if the, some of the existing backbone infrastructure was there, you know, we would just tell the developer, you know, all these costs are there, assuming there was a treatment plant to go to, but, you know, $7 million to construct the system from scratch is way more than, you know, any one developer could bear. So I do expect that there'll have to be some kind of cost sharing in some manner, and, but I would kind of maybe wait to see what kind of interest there is in that one large parcel. One advantage is that it's, it's not too far from the plant, right? It's the parcel next door, so you could kind of build some of this in increments.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Other questions on this?
Anyone else?
So again, just some information about the site Mr. Quinn was asking about here. So again, we looked at locating the drain fields on the site. You know, it's doable, there's plenty of property there, as long as the soils would be amenable to it. And then to kind of summarize, again, we still need to do some soil work there, kind of trying to finish up a few other, you know, like what kind of businesses we think we would work there, and really, it would just be hopefully getting a customer in that we could partner with to make this happen. Questions on any of that? I know we ran through that quick. Chris said I was a little limited on the time today on the agenda, so I know that was a lot of information, but happy to take any questions.
Anybody got any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just, Mr. Whitlow and Mr. McAvoy, when we're looking at the question that Mr. Quinn had on whether it's debt service or what have you, or doing some cost sharing, is that something that we as a board should be looking at in terms of our village planning for the Union Hall Village Plan and start linking up this more specific infrastructure planning with that discussion?
Sure. Sure. Madam Vice Chair, I think, you know, to your question, yes, the village plans, the designated growth areas are very instructive to guide us in our capital improvement planning efforts. What I would say in the past, as an example, the Union Hall Village Plan, we knew there was a critical need for water, and so when we had the opportunity with the ARPA funds, the COVID relief funds, if you will, to purpose those, that's been very beneficial actually to bring water to Union Hall. And so whether it's Union Hall, whether it's Westlake, whether it's the 220 North Corridor, another village plan, Faram, and so forth, these studies certainly help guide and direct and can guide the board through the CIP process. We have set aside some dollars, village improvement dollars, as well as infrastructure development, whether it be utilities, whether it be transportation improvements, as Mr. McAvoy said, because you never know in terms of an economic development project, there may be a significant investment from a developer who just really needs to leverage some dollars that they may not have, and whether that be with the county and the Water Authority. Previously, most of our previous investments with the Water Authority, when it's the county and the Water Authority, it's been 50/50. However, we have done a few of those where we split them a third, a third with the developer, a third the county, a third with the Water Authority, and that's lent itself well to make these things actually happen, because as Mike mentioned, short of, you know, some leveraged dollars, a developer cannot absorb those dollars.
Yeah, I think that the cost on this system, you know, from scratch, is just probably unaffordable for one developer. So, you know, I do think it's realistic that, you know, we would have to help support that to get it started, similar to the, you know, the water system.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here today.
Sure.
All right, I'm going to call for a break. We'll reconvene and be 75 with a brief update on the budget with Ryan and with county staff, and then from there, we'll go into a closed session. So just a real brief break, and we'll go to V75.
You want me to go get him? Or you might be getting him.
Did either one of you all make a copy or make a list of the board appointments?
I do have mine.
You just got yours, okay. All right, we need to, we just come out of a closed meeting, we need to take a vote on that, but our vice chair has something she needs to read first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements.
matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which the certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Second.
All right, we got, neither.
Second.
Tim made a second. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson.
Yes. Mr. Tatum, you've got an appointment?
I sure do. Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate for the Aging Services Committee for the Blue Ridge District, I'd like to nominate Tammy Pickrell for that position.
All right, we got a second on that?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, on the TLAC Board, we've got two appointments. We'll do those together. I think, I forgot now which one of you all said that you talked to Jeffrey Salmon?
Yes.
And he said he would do it?
He did.
And then Ms. Smith, you advise you was willing to do it?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we reappoint Supervisor Smith to the TLAC Board, and that we also reappoint Mr. Jeff Salmon to the TLAC Board to serve another term.
All right, I got a second?
I have a second.
Mr. James, uh, Mr. Jamison, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? No opposition. And then we've got School Board, where are they going to meet every year?
Every month.
Every month, rather. I said every year. They meet monthly on a monthly basis. And Laurie Smith's going to do that. And Nick Mitchell agreed to do that. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Let me have a motion first. They said they would do it. I'll make the motion then. I'll go ahead and do that, that they've done that. So I get a second.
Second.
I think Tim did a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? No opposition. Chris, do we leave anything out? Excuse me.
I need to put, nominate Jason Thurman for the Ag Development Committee.
All right, got a motion for, for that. We got a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anyone else got any nominations? All right, seeing that we have no nominations, then we've got some special use permits. I think we've got one that has been pulled. Lisa, if you'll come forth and take care of those. Lisa Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman Thompson. Let me get this up here. We got a request very late this afternoon for the first public hearing. There at your desk, there is a memo from Mr. Frith about the duplex, the special use permit for the duplex. He is requesting for the board to his accept his withdrawal of this special use permit. He has decided that he is not going to construct the duplex. He's just going to do a single family dwelling. And it has to do, wire zoning ordinance requires an acre of land. And he doesn't want to have to do a sub, he doesn't want to have to vacate a line between two parcels. He would just rather build two single family dwellings. So he has asked if the Board of Supervisors would accept his withdrawal to the special use permit. And I would need some type of action.
All right, board, what's your?
Or if you have any other questions of me.
Thank you.
Has anybody got any questions? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we would accept it.
Second.
We got a, we got a withdrawal exception and a second. Madam Clerk, do a roll call vote on this, please.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, your next one?
Okay, thank you. We have another special use permit this evening. And let me give you just a brief overview. Basically, there is an existing manufactured home park. It's approximately 11.20 acres of the parcel is zoned A1 agricultural. It's located on Chris Drive, and it's in the Snow Creek Election District. And basically, the applicant would like to expand this existing manufactured mobile home park. And your future land use designation is low density residential. So just to give you some more background, in December of 92, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors approved a rezoning on three parcels and a portion of one parcel, 2.82 acres. The property at that time was zoned RC1, which is our residential combined subdivision to A1 agricultural for a special use permit. They wanted a mobile home park. They wanted to go from four units to eight units. So it is my understanding that prior to 1988, there was a mobile home park. In order to get it into compliance and expand it, they had to do the rezoning. They also went back in August of 97, they came back to the Board of Supervisors to approve an additional mount from RC1 residential combined to A1 for another expansion of this manufactured home park. Like I said before, this is a special use permit to expand it. Again, it is on Chris Drive, which is off of Doe Run Road, which is a state Route 764. There are 14 units in this manufactured home park at this time. And the Chris Drive is a 30-foot right away. When you look at the conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant, you would see that he would like to have 20 homes in this development. There is also green space for a playground and a picnic area. And in the Franklin County manufactured home ordinance, 5% of your gross area has to be for some type of open space, common space, recreational facilities, that type of recreation. The minimum lot size will be 50 feet wide by 200 feet deep, which equals 10,000 square feet, which meets our code. There will be two off-street parking spaces for each of the manufactured housing. The homes, each home will be approximately 20 feet wide to 30 feet deep, and would meet the 10-foot between, excuse me, the Franklin County Code requires that 10 feet between, 20 feet between the spaces. You'll, when we do the site plan review, if this is approved, we go through and make sure that they meet all the qualifications, that it is in conformity with our regulations. The park can be served by town water. Unfortunately, the sewer for the town does not come up to this property. So the, it'll have to be a septic system. And the applicant would like the electricity to be underground. Staff had no inquiries before the public hearing for the Planning Commission. This is a vicinity map showing you the location. We also like to give you an aerial showing you the properties. They are the ones in the blue. This is your zoning map. So you see that this is A1, the little orange color is RC1 or gold. And then the rest is A1. As I said before, it's low density residential for your, for your future land use. This is the conceptual plan that was presented to the Planning Commission and to you all. You see the existing manufactured housing there. This is the addition that he would like to do. And then the green open space. Just to let you know, we did find out from the Health Department, since there has to be a septic system, it will determine there may not be able to be 20 more units put on the site because it has to be served by a septic system. But that will be up to the Department of Health once they get the information from the applicant.
Ms. Cooper, as a matter of clarification, are you saying that they may not be allowed to put these particular 20 parcels on there, or no more other than these 20?
He, the applicant is asking for 20. So the special use permit, if you choose to grant it this evening, will be for 20 units. I'm just letting you know that the septic system that he may have to, that he'll have to put in, the Health Department said that it may not allow 20 units. So in other words, he's going to need more land for that septic system. So he may have to back off on some of his units. But he's asking for 20. So I, if the Board of Supervisors would like to grant this special use permit, I would still grant it for 20 and let the soil scientists, you know, determine how much land is is going to per to be able to keep the existing along with the new.
Thank you.
This is an existing manufactured home park that has been in existence since the early 90s. I think it's probably been around the 1988 when zoning was adopted. The new owner of the park would like to, to expand it to allow more housing for the county. He also wants to remove the the inhabitable homes that are already on there and replace with new ones, try to improve the existing homes on the property. He'll probably go into more detail about that in his presentation. As I said before, the town of Rocky Mount, he can have water. However, he cannot have sewer from the town of Rocky Mount. So the owner will have to work with the Virginia Department of Health and an AOSE, a soil evaluator, to determine the, how many units can be put on the property after that information has been gathered. We do know that this will generate more traffic and noise, but we don't feel that it would be any more than creating a new subdivision with single family housing. The expansion of the park would benefit the housing situation that we have in the county. It would provide an affordable home for families for the county. As you know, your comprehensive plan does have housing goals and strategies. And it does state that affordable housing opportunities should be available for all residents. It is typically understood that manufacturer, manufactured housing is one of the most prominent forms of affordable housing that we have in the current housing landscape. So the comprehensive plan also states that a limited variety of housing types in your low density residential areas is is good. So it's good to have different types of housing. Considering this, the application would support, would be supported by the comprehensive plan for the expansion of this manufactured home park. Giving this information, the Planning Commission and staff thinks that the proposed special use permit is consistent with your comp plan. As said, it would not be detrimental to the adjacent properties, and it would not change the character of the zoning district. Your Planning Commission held their public hearing. They voted to approve the special use permit with the following 10's conditions. The vote was six in favor, one absent. I'll go through these briefly. The manufactured home park expansion will be developed substantially with the conceptual plan that is in front of you. Number two, the proposed expansion will have to comply with Chapter 10, which is your manufactured home park ordinance that's in your Franklin County Code. A 30-foot buffer and natural preservation area should be retained along the western and northwestern property lines as shown on the concept plan. The property shall not be clear cut. Larger trees shall be retained to the greatest extent possible. Compliance with state regulations, they would have to comply with anything from the Virginia Department of Health, the town of Rocky Mount's PSA concerning the water connection, and anything, any improvements to the existing easement that VDOT would have. There shall be no inoperable unlicensed vehicles on the property. Common areas and parking lots shall always be kept in good repair and safe for the public. There will have to be trash, some type of trash container collection for secure onsite vendor, visible 911 addresses for the individual lots. And the owner applicant will be required to vacate the property lines between the three parcels that the special use permit is for. And a survey will need to be submitted and approved prior to site plan approval. I know that was a lot of information. I'd be glad to answer any questions. And the applicant is here to give you a presentation this evening.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, there's, I assume, an existing some type of sewage system there or septic system?
I think there is. There should be. I'll let the applicant, the person that bought the mobile home park, could probably talk to that and-
So I'm assuming they're going to try to expand that or create a new one?
Right. They would have to expand it, or if the Health Department wants them to create a new one. Or since it is an older park, rules and regulations could have changed Dylan with sewer.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper, on the one provision where it had that on cutting of the trees and leaving some of the larger trees there, who came up with that?
Actually, to, to tell you the truth, it was carried over from the other rezonings we felt to keep it in. If it's something that you don't feel like needs to be in there, you are welcome to remove it.
I don't feel comfortable with it. And I'll tell you why. When you start thinning down forest and taking out trees and leaving other trees, the trees that you leave often become very susceptible to wind, especially in a, in a trailer park. And I would hate to think that we made the property owners retain certain trees, and then for whatever reason, one of those trees ends up blowing over on someone's trailer, and someone gets hurt because of a condition we put on the special use permit. So for me, I would like to see that come out.
And I think that can be, I mean, that's a valid reason to take out a condition. And staff or the Planning Commission wouldn't mind if you removed it.
I mean, if the property owner wants to, that's on them. But I don't feel comfortable with making that a requirement. And then if a storm comes through or something happens and one of these trees that has become susceptible because we've removed other trees from around them.
Right.
And that, you know, puts them out there. And, you know, I'd just rather leave that to the property owner if they want to do it. But I don't feel good about making that a provision.
Well, and you would still have, if you, this may not be the best picture, but this would, if you look at the property, so we would vacate all these lines. So you would have them probably coming up approximately through here, because here's Chris, Chris Drive. You would, he still has an opportunity to keep, you know, some vegetation to keep the park private from the other.
Keep the boundaries, yeah. And I'm, I'm very familiar with that area. And, you know, it's just keeping larger trees secluded, you know, out when you thinned it out to put your trailers in. I just don't, I would rather leave that up to the property owner. I don't want to make that a provision that we're requiring.
And we did lose a lot of trees in this last ice storm that caused a lot of powder and power outages, and I'm sure some damage destructions.
And wind has a bad habit of finding mobile homes.
Yes. So that's something when you, after the presentation and you go to do your vote, if this is something that the Board of Supervisors would like to see, you can just say eliminate that.
Okay.
Condition.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, Lisa, just a question. Development team, with respect to ENS and stormwater, Bill Rainey had indicated that the ENS control plan shall be submitted, of course, if the land disturbance is 10,000 square feet and stormwater with a disturbance of one acre. So is the reason we don't know this and that the language is, is a noncommittal due to the fact that it might be downsized from 20?
It could be. That's a standard. Usually, we do not make that determination until the site plan has been submitted so we can see exactly what's being graded and know, because the engineer will tell us how much they're grading. And then that'll also show if it triggers the acre for the stormwater. So that's one reason why it is so vague. If, if he does not have to put 20 units in, he probably, there's a possibility he might not trigger stormwater. But more than likely, he, the, he will trigger an engineered ENS or erosion settlement control plan. ENS or erosion settlement control plan, just because it'll be over 10,000 square feet.
So this has been discussed with the applicant, and he understands that?
I, no one worked with him. We knew he had to do site plan review and erosion settlement control and possibly do stormwater. I don't know if he knows how detailed, he didn't have any questions, but I'm sure if he does, he will, he will let y'all know.
These are expensive propositions if, if you meet those triggers.
Yes, they are. It does cost, um, more money. It's just not something like a, when you do a single-family house where we can do an in lieu of for even the stormwater. Um, being it's a development, it's a community similar to if you, like I said, do a subdivision, and usually large subdivisions require ENS and stormwater, um, engineered plans.
The only other thing I had is a number eight, the condition number eight, where it talks about the, uh, trash and litter.
Mm-hmm.
Topic.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the verbiage, um, says that it shall be properly contained, um, and secured on-site. Is this, are, are you saying that you want it, a fence around it, or what does that language mean?
Um, when the trash, because obviously, um, the way this condition is set, he can put a fence around it. I'm not sure if the mobile home ordinance requires a fence around it, but we want, however they decide to do it, we want all the trash contained to that property, not blowing to somebody else's, and that because of it being this type of development, we do not want them taking it to, um, the compact sites. We want a licensed hauler to come and get their trash.
Okay, I just didn't know if we need to be more specific.
If you want to make sure, or I can check real fit, quick on the mobile home or, ordinance, and I'm sorry, I don't know on the top of my head if it has to be fenced. Um, but if you want to put that in as part of the condition, that it would have to be fenced in, I would make it specific if it's just like on the three sides, or do you want it to have some type of gate that they have to open and go in?
What is your professional opinion?
I think as long as you have it on three sides. I mean, most apartment complexes, um, have some type of fencing up. I don't know that all of them have gates.
Right.
Um, a, a gate would keep it the low, but if the wind starts blowing, I'm not going to be able to keep it in with that fence.
Yeah, thank you.
Lisa, I just have one point. Um, I feel like we get a lot of these permits, and they're so open-ended. We're waiting to see if the health department is gonna grant them the sewage to do 20 sites, but here we are granting a, a special use permit for 20 sites, not knowing what it's going to wind up being, and I don't, I don't like that. I feel like we, th, these things should be narrowed down before it comes to us.
Well, I guess one reason why we do it this way is because an AOSE is going to cost the applicant quite a bit of money to be able to see what he or she can do, and the site plan, the engineered plans for the ENS and stormwater will cost them a lot of money, so most developers want to know upfront, can I have 20 units, knowing on the backside that I may only be able to have 15 because of the sewer, but I don't have to put that expense upfront before I come asking for the special use permit.
And I understand that, but those, those studies are going to be the same regardless?
They are. I mean, it's, the way our ordinance is writ, written, we don't request that upfront, um, we don't, I mean, if it's something, if there's things that the, the board would like to see upfront, I mean, if you want to start seeing some of these more expensive things, I mean, you can put that, that they have to have it before they can come to get a special use permit, but it's up to y'all how much expense you want it to cause the developer prior.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, I had, I've been asking that since I came on the board, because it is open-ended, in my opinion.
And it happens all the ti, I'm not picking on this.
No, not this applicant, no.
Happens all the time.
But, but, you know, I'm going to be bringing up later our compliance office, or, um, issue, but at a minimum, I would like to think that the board could get a follow-up report about what has been accomplished with the approval of the SUP and, and all the predicating factors that are in these conditions. It would be good for us to understand, you know, did they meet the requirements or did they not? That might be a stopgap measure.
And that could be something that staff could send you in a Friday packet, give you an update, um, of all the site plans, especially, if, if you want them all, even the ones that don't have to come before you, but if you, if you want the special use permits that come before you, the rezonings that come before you, do they actually follow through? Or, you know, did the developer walk away and it's just sitting there?
Because we're putting our approval, our stamp of approval on things that we don't even know if they're going to come to fruition.
Mm-hmm.
And that doesn't leave me as a supervisor feeling really good, that I've just given a blanket approval to something that's not even there yet.
Well, Laurie, it, it is contingent upon the Department of Health granting their, uh, the, the permit, right?
The septic.
It's not, it's not open-ended, you can do this, whatever, and that, I really, I we get so many complaints from the builders and developers about all the delays and expenses they have, it, it's hard to think about building in yet another one where they have to bring everything kind of in a box with a bow to us. Like, I'm comfortable on this one with it being open on the septic, because it's not really open. The Virginia Department of Health is going to make a decision on exactly what they can do.
And Dan, let me be clear, I, I'm not sure we're on the same page. I'm, I'm looking for our staff in the planning department, once the development team or whomever, um, determines that, that a given case has been satisfied and closed, that we're apprised of that.
Oh, I like that, I, the follow-up idea I like.
Yes.
I was, I was more referring to the front end.
I'm not trying to place another burden, no, on builders.
I like the follow-up, yeah.
That's, I was going to add to it when it got to be my turn, not only that what that, uh, Nick and Laurie just brought up, but I don't like this thing about the trash litter that was brought up. I mean, either it's got to be enclosed in all the way and somebody properly pick it up in a trash hauler, or however it's going to be done, I want all that stuff worked out before it comes before the board. I, I, I don't like it, you know, I'll check and see and bring it back. It's getting to be a whole lot of that here lately, and it needs to be, I'm talking about number eight, you know, that stuff needs to be clarified and brought out a little bit more. Uh, it's too, it's too open-ended here on a lot of these things, and so I think, I think you understand what we're talking about on that. Is there any more questions or comment by the board? All right, is there anybody here from the McLaughlin Investment that wishes to speak?
Mr. McLaughlin is here.
All right, sir. Come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Terry McLaughlin with McLaughlin Investments. I reside at 1635 Morewood Road in Hardy, Virginia, over at the Westlake area. So, uh, for clarity on the dumpster side of it, my personal preference would be a three-sided fenced area, so it would allow the hauler to be able to get in and access it, and it would also prevent a liability for people opening gates that could cause someone to get hurt. So that would make the most sense, and actually, we can put the fenced area where the dumpsters would be, where it'd be easier for the hauler to be able to get in and out of, and also to be able to kind of control it with some shrubs and trees and stuff to be able to prevent any wind from blowing trash around.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So my plan, as you've seen, is to add an additional 20 units. Uh, all of these units will be brand-new units, is, uh, 2025 models, uh, so they'll be brand-new homes. Uh, my goal here is to be able to provide more housing. Um, I can post a rental just on simple marketplace right now and get over 9,000 hits in less than 24 hours, so that kind of tells you how bad, uh, the rental market currently is in their area needing homes. Uh, I currently own another mobile home park already in Franklin County over off of Route 116. Uh, I've spent over $600,000 cleaning that property up since I purchased it three years ago. Uh, since I purchased this property 90 days ago, I've already exceeded over $100,000 already just cleaning this particular property up. I went through all the older homes, uh, took all the underpinning off of the ones that I personally own, and have replaced all the underpinning with, uh, metal roofing material to make it more a cleaner look and a more sturdy look, uh, as well. We're getting ready to go through and replace porches and decks on the homes. The, the park itself was, uh, a little bit older. It was owned by the Lowell family, and, uh, we've gone through and been working on cleaning it up. We're working on renovating, uh, and there's a couple of units that we'll, we'll, we will be tearing down and removing from the property, but the units that we do plan on putting back in there will be new units. Um, we will be painting the existing units that's currently on-site to make sure that that gives it a better standard and to bring some of the older units to get them back up to a little bit more quality. Um, and we will eventually go through on the older, older units and be replacing the windows and putting vinyl windows in those units as well over the coming months. So, uh, the 20 units will cost me roughly to purchase and to set up about $55,000 a unit to be able to put those in there, to give you an idea of kind of what that expense is going to look like, and we're expecting to spend somewhere around $200,000 to be able to go in and get the upper, infrastructure in. Um, one of the things that was brought up about the trees, uh, if you look at to the border to the west of the property, um, naturally, that tree line would stay intact. We would only clear the trees that's necessary to be able to put the homes in there, uh, and that, you're not going to want to leave big trees between the homes. You're going to want to clear between the homes, but also keep a good, uh, basically so the roots of the trees can hold the soil together, prevent erosion, and to be able to, uh, make sure that it also blocks wind coming into the park. But the park that I purchased over on 116, when this past ice storm come through, I had about 15 trees that come down over there, so I can understand the question and why that was brought up. So we, we are going to want to make sure that we take the safety precautions to make sure that we're not putting trees that could fall on homes and make sure that part is done as well. Um, I do want to officially introduce myself as a individual that's going to be building a lot here at the Lake area. Uh, I've got, uh, a property down on Scruggs Road that I'm getting ready to build 16 houses currently right now. Uh, I've got, uh, other properties we're getting ready, we're looking at, we're working with the county now for a town home development of 114 townhomes, and, uh, I'm in the process of closing on the property across from Bojangles at Lake Watch, so we're planning on bringing that back to life here in the near future. We're, we're projected to close next week. So, but if you have any questions about this current property, let me have it.
Sir, I've got, I've got a question that I asked a while ago, and I, I need to ask you again, are you talking about, uh, buying and putting in, uh, 20 brand-new houses more?
Correct.
Or are you talking about 20 all total?
20 additional, and then we will...
So how many, how many will be there completely total?
Uh, you're looking approximately, by the time everything is done, roughly around, total around tw, uh, 38 to 40?
38 to 40?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, now that clarifies it to me.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was 20 altogether.
Now, there is currently with the three properties, the house that's currently there, there's a one to the left of the house, there's a total of 21 to 22 units total now, and there's really nothing to the left-hand side of Chris Drive. Um, and the homes itself with the, the depth of the property, uh, we're going to actually have Chris Frith come out and, uh, do the soil work and everything to be able to send over to the health department. Uh, there is a possibility that we know that we might lose four or five of the homes, and we're okay with that, but we want to make sure that if we can, it depends on if we have to do individual septic systems that would pretty much take care of two units compared to doing a septic system that would take care of all 20 units. So it really depends on what the engineer, uh, requests us to do in the health department.
What do you have now, a septic unit for each house?
Yes.
One?
Yeah, no, there's multiple.
Multiple?
Yes, sir.
Like two?
Hmm.
Two or three?
It's about one per every two units.
Okay. That answers my question. Has anybody got any more questions?
I, you understood where I was at on those trees. I, if you want, if you are okay with having whatever trees you want, it's your park, I don't care, but as, from the county standpoint, I don't feel comfortable with making you keep certain trees when that could pose a problem in the future.
Yes, that, we, we, we want to be able to keep the scenery to the property, to make it look somewhere where someone desires to live, right? However, we do have to take safety as the number one precaution and make sure that we're not putting anyone at risk.
You keep whatever you want to keep. I just don't want to think that we're making you keep certain trees that could pose a problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam, all right, that'll close the pub, uh, open hearing. Madam Clerk, you got anybody signed up for this?
No, I have no one signed up.
Are there any here that wish to come forward, state your name and address to speak to this project? McLaughlin Investment LLC, anyone here? All right, with no one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, board, open to, what's, what's your pleasure? I want to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this special use permit as requested and as presented by the planning commission.
Are there any exceptions?
With?
You want to say anything about your trees?
If he's okay with, with it being in there, I'm...
You're okay with it?
Yeah, I, I trust him in making that decision.
I still say, take, take it out.
Take it out.
Take it out.
Just take it out, period.
I will amend my motion to withdraw the provision concerning the trees to be left in the park. And that's to be left up to the property owner.
That can be left up to the property owner. Have we got a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Let me just clarify, you're striking number four, is that?
Yes, yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, an application now on David and Tammy. I'm going to mess this name up. Husa?
Husa.
Husa.
Husa, I did mess it up then, didn't I?
Thank you, Chairman Thompson, members of the board. Yes, we're here for another, uh, special use permit. Um, this property is Zoned R1, which is our residential suburban subdivision. It's on Lakewood Forest Road. It's in the Gills Creek District. Um, the proposed, um, special use permit is to allow a home, second, single-family, detached dwelling on a lot, and your future land use is low-density residential. Um, just to give you a little background, um, the owner applicant's contractor submitted a building permit for a garage back in August of 2022. Um, staff reviewed the application and informed, um, the contractor that the, the R1 residential suburban district, that a second home on the property would require a special use permit to be approved to have the garage have, um, a living area. On October 13th, 2023, um, staff spoke to the owner explaining that unless they applied for the special use permit, that they would have to remove anything associated with the kitchen out of the detached garage and remove items associated with the kitchen. They gave us a new building plans, um, for the detached garage, and a final certificate of completion was issued by the building department in November of 2023. Um, the owner has decided that they would like to use the top part of the garage as a living area, so they are here to apply for a special use permit. Um, it is, um, for a family member. Um, it's, it was supposed to be for, um, his mother-in-law. Um, unfortunately, I was informed, um, she has passed away, but he would still like to go forward because he has other family members that, um, visit, and he would like them to be able to stay in the second dwelling. Um, so the building department requires a change of use to do this, and the zoning requires a special use permit to be approved. Um, so this detached garage, uh, does have its own septic system. Um, it was issued by the Department of Health in July of 2023. Um, the water source is, um, provided by an existing well. Um, the property is located on the corner of Lakewood Forest Road, which is a state-maintained road in, um... road in Ardean Lane, which is a 30-foot private road. Staff received two phone calls prior to the public hearing and of the planning commission, and four individuals spoke against the application at the planning commission public hearing. We'd like to give you a vicinity map of where it is located in the Gills Creek District. This is the property, this is an aerial of the property. It's a little over three acres. This is your zoning map showing the green is R1. The kind of oranges color here is residential combined subdivision. Your future land use for the area is low-density residential. This is your conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant. You can see the house and the detached garage up here that they would like to turn into the second single-family for family members. Analysis of this, this particular use would not be substantial detrimental to the adjacent properties due to the size of the property and the surrounding area being constructed with single-family dwellings. The second dwelling would generate similar amount of noise or traffic as any other single residence. The use would be in harmony with the purpose and the intent of this district. This district is for residential neighborhoods. You do expect to find single-family dwellings in the neighborhood, and you could find a second dwelling for family members in an R1 district. The comprehensive plan states that a limited variety of dwelling types are anticipated in low-density residential. Also, keep in mind that the appropriate density for the future land use is one to two dwelling units per acre. The comprehensive plan would support this special use permit with the conditions. Your planning commission did hold their public hearing. They did vote with a six in favor, one absent for five conditions. I will go over those. The special use permit authorized will only have one second dwelling on this parcel. No additional residential dwellings shall be permitted on the property. The occupant of the second dwelling shall be only for immediate family, including siblings, grandparents, parents, children, spouses, in accordance with 25-232 of the Franklin County Code. In reference to condition two, the applicant property owner shall have to reflect the use and the occupancy in an affidavit that will be approved by the planning and community development department and recorded in the clerk of circuit court's office. The second dwelling shall have its own address clearly visible and displayed for 911 purposes and visible from Lakewood Forest Road and the dwelling itself. The applicant property owner should obtain all required permits from the building and planning department prior to the use and occupancy of this second dwelling. I would be glad to answer any questions that you have, and the applicants are here to speak.
Anybody quit? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Yes, Lisa, thank you. Just a couple of questions. I thought I had this all nailed down in my brain, and some of the circumstances have changed. A special use permit from a legal perspective transfers with the property sold.
Yes.
And so, a concern that I have, and I know that it's prob, I think I know the answer to this, but if this property were to be sold with this SUP in place, and another family comes in, and the use that's granted by the SUP is disregarded, we'd handle that on a complaint basis or either by compliance officer inspection? I mean, how do we, how do we work towards making, because this is an R1 district?
Right.
And it's our most restrictive district in terms of accessory dwelling units and those, those types of things, and short-term rentals. I worry about, it might not be this family I'm worried about. I'm worried about making sure that something like this doesn't get to a point that it moves outside the scope of what we, the protections that exist in an R1 neighborhood.
To, to answer your questions, the special use permit will go with it. So if, if the family sells it, a new family buys it, then this garage can only be used for a family member, the way the ordinance is written now in an R1 district. We would, the way we would enforce it now is we would, somebody would file a complaint if it wasn't being used by a family member. Let's say they're renting it long-term or, or short-term rentals. And as you know, short-term rentals at this point in time are not allowed in an R1, so they would be in violation. That's why you don't see a condition about short-term rentals because of the zoning ordinance not allowing it at this time. That's how we would handle it now in our office.
Okay.
It would be by complaint only, but the family or whoever purchases the property would have to adhere to the conditions of the special use permit.
Another question, I have been out to the site, and I've looked at it from different perspectives. Back when this garage was built, just my observation is that the topography of that property, it's, it's got, you know, an incline for purposes of talking about stormwater runoff. And I can see where water over time has come down that incline across the driveway, and it, it looks like it's just created a, I don't know, it, it, it just looks like that the property has, there's a, you know, a gully, if you will, that's not the right word. But the runoff, it doesn't look to me that there's been any mitigation for runoff from the original applicant with this permit. Can you give me any insight as to that? Because I get concerned about seeing the effects of that runoff, but also knowing that stuff's going into the lake.
Right. This particular application, I don't think I have it with me. I don't think it triggered stormwater. Oh, I know it didn't trigger stormwater. And as far as ENS and stormwater, the, the structure itself was under 10,000 square feet, so they would not have to get an, in lieu of erosion settlement control, permit. Now, we didn't hear any issues when it was under construction from the building department that there was some issues with runoff. I mean, since you're telling me about it, and I must not have noticed the gully or when the site visit was out there, I mean, I can, staff can check on this to see if it's something that was caused by this addition, or is it just a natural?
And I don't know the answer to that. I just, I have that lens when I look at property, and it just appears to me because of the topography that there is some degradation for some of the property on both sides, you know, the neighboring property going down to the applicant's property. And I just didn't know historically if mitigation had been a subject of discussion.
Probably not with the garage addition, but what staff can do is we can pull the subdivision plat, make sure that there wasn't supposed to be, you know, an easement, a drainage easement that was, and somebody has tampered with it, which is making water go different areas. Staff, the development service staff can take a look at it, go out there and take a look at it and see if there's anything that might be able to be mitigated or see if there's a problem, you know, that ENS could take care of.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Would I need to include that as a condition, or is this follow-up with staff?
This will just be follow-up. I will talk to the development review coordinator about it, and he will probably be the one that goes out there and takes a look at it, and we'll pull the old subdivision plat just to make sure it's not like a drainage easement.
Yeah, because that neighbor that, that sits on that incline, it's not fair, in my humble opinion, you know, that, and I don't know if it's on their property line or the one next door, but when I saw it, it, it just looked, looks like it's being unjustly degraded by water runoff. That's what I see. Now, your, your staff's going to have to tell me what I'm seeing, if I'm seeing what I think I'm seeing.
And we'll definitely send you an email-
Okay.
-to let you know what we find.
Thank you.
Or actually, we could send it to all of you since it's been brought up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curiosity, say 20 years from now, these people sell out, and you've got these two structures, can the, the, the next buyer split that off and create two separate houses there? It's, it's 3.12 acres, I think.
I think probably with the subdivision ordinance that we have in place now, they're not going to have, because they're going to have to have 125 feet of frontage for each lot, and we don't allow flag lots anymore. So I think they would have a hard time with our subdivision ordinance right now cutting it off.
I was just curious, because we, we approved one a while back that was a similar situation with a separate house, and, and I don't remember what we said about that, but that, that's all I had. Thank you, Lisa.
Anybody else down there? Anybody else got it? All right. It's Mr. or Mrs. Zoo?
They, they're here. They're here.
All right, if one of them want to come forward?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is David Uzah, and I am, along with my wife, the property owner of this special use permit request.
All right, sir. Before you start, you heard a question a while ago about the potential runoff of your property onto other property?
Yes, sir.
Will you address that, please?
I, it's a naturally sloping piece of property, even before the garage was there. So water runs down from, it's a three-acre parcel, and it runs down the front. There is a drainage kind of ditch to one side of the property, and that runs down to a box, a collection box.
Down to what?
To a collection box.
Okay.
And that collection box goes through a, through a perforated pipe and goes down to the riprap down at the lake. But that's, that's just water running down, kind of like a, I don't want to call it a gully, but it's, it's, it, I guess when the property was built, that was where water was running down that the side of property between me and, and the neighboring property.
Who maintains that, who maintains that collection box?
I do.
And keeps it clean and keeps the leaves and stuff out of it?
Yep, that's it, down at the end of our driveway. Yes, sir.
In your driveway, and it doesn't get stocked up?
No, sir. No, no.
Yeah, is there an easement in place?
I don't know that there's an easement. I don't know that there's an easement. I, I, I've looked at the, at the plat, and I don't see that there's anything there. But I could be wrong. Now, on the opposite side of the property where the garage was built, I think that's where you're talking about, Supervisor Smith, right? And if you were out to the property, you can see I laid some drainage pipe down there that I planned to bury and also try to divert water down to a collection spot so that it doesn't run over into the neighbor's property.
Yeah, because it looks like to me that your, that the property lines are not exactly linear, you know, on the side of your driveway.
Sure.
And so for that reason, it just, you know, it looked like to me solutions might be hard to come up with because of that factor.
Right, understand. And, and water drains was something that was a concern of mine, too. And that's why those black pipes are laying there that I'm looking to bury, right, to try and divert some of that water, because I don't want it going across my neighbor's yard into his property.
Right.
Because my neighbor was kind enough to give me an easement so that we could pull electricity from the pole in his yard over to the back of our building. So I certainly don't want to do anything to upset him, or he's planted grass there, grass seed there, because they did a lot of new development there on their property, and I don't want to ruin that. And I'm worried about also when the rain comes down very hard that, you know, it's not running across and, and creating a lot of mud going down that way.
Yeah, that, those, that's just a concern of mine.
Sure, absolutely, understand. And I'm willing to do whatever recommendation that, that planning might have, if they come out there and they have some recommendation on how to better improve the drains, absolutely, I'll do whatever's necessary.
Yeah, and I do sense that there's, you know, amicable relationships.
Sure, yeah.
Amicable, I should say.
Sure, sure.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate your willingness to participate.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
Have you and your neighbor had any conversations about that?
Not about that specifically, no. No, we haven't had about the, the drainage.
So they're not upset or anything?
No, they haven't mentioned anything to me about the drainage problem.
Okay.
I think I'm the one that opened that can of worms.
We just want to make sure we get it closed.
That's okay. I mean, I'm willing to have anybody come out from, from planning and, and give me any recommendations to try and improve on that drainage. First of all, Mr. Chairman, thank you and supervisors for reviewing this application. I mean, it's been a, it's been a long process. And as, as Lisa mentioned, originally, this request was space for my mother-in-law. My mother-in-law had been living with us since September of 2022. She was previously living in the basement of our current home with very limited personal space. As Lisa mentioned, I did call the office this week and let them know that my mother-in-law had passed away unexpectedly on January 6th. And we just got back, my wife and I just got back from burying her last Friday down in, in her home Bristol, Tennessee. But we decided to go ahead with this special use permit because we do have a big family. We have three children, three grandchildren, and hopefully more, more grandchildren to come in the future. But over the last seven and a half years that we've owned this property, we've had many family members living with us in the house, not in the garage, but in the house. We had my father living with us for about 20 months when COVID first started. At the same time, we also had our daughter, our son-in-law, and our granddaughter living with us while they were saving up for down payment on their home. And then for the last two and a half years, we've had my mother-in-law living with us. So, you know, we want to have space for the future. God forbid something happens and somebody gets, has an illness, or they lose a job and they need a place to stay. We want to have a place for, for that family to stay. So we're asking to, to proceed with this, and we'd like to use it as a, a temporary guest house or a guest house for temporary living space of our visiting children and grandchildren, or for future family members for a longer term. I'll skip through some of this other stuff. I did have some slides in here, but I think Lisa probably covered some of this. But this is kind of the general plan of what it looks like. We did have originally the, the kitchen in, in the plan, and that was removed because of, like Lisa said, when I, when it was presented, the voter was told that we'd need a special use permit. They were ready to go, and so we went ahead, we took the kitchen out, we took the bedroom out, we submitted the plans with, with just a, a, a study and an entry and a, what was called a craft area at the time. What we'd like to do is convert that now and put the kitchen in there and use that study as a, a, a bedroom and put a closet on it. All that space still exists. So from the outside, absolutely nothing's changing. I mean, we're just changing the, the interior and the actual use. This one, I think Lisa pretty much covered. This was some of the dates, and the only reason I included this in there was because at the public hearing for the planning commission, there was some discussion about the process that was filed, and if we had actually followed all of the rules and regulations, and we did. I mean, we submitted it, we were told we had to take the kitchen out, we took the kitchen out. It was inspected, it was approved, and we did get the, the certificate of completion and then brought it to the, to the planning commission meeting. I know that there were some, there was some conversation, some opposition at, at the planning commission meeting. In fact, there was some very well-organized opposition at the planning meeting. I think there were four people that spoke in opposition of the permit, and, but some of the things that they were talking about are really non-issues. One of them was what was brought up about short-term rentals, and short-term rentals are, are, yeah, short-term rentals are not used in, in R1 or not available in R1. The question came up about it being subdivided in the future. You know, that was discussed at the planning commission meeting, and the property just doesn't have the road frontage to be able to, to subdivide it, so that's not going to happen. The last thing that came up as an area concern that I heard from one of my neighbors was that we don't, we live in a small subdivision. There are seven lots in there. It's called shoreline acres, and there are restrictive covenants on it. And one of the covenants or one of the restrictions in there is that you can't have a more than one dwelling on, on, on a lot. And so, bringing this special use permit, I knew that that was potentially going to be an issue, and I talked to, to planning about it, and they said, well, that, that would be a civil matter. That would not be something that, that's part of any of the zoning. So I did a little research, and I found out that in February of last year, the Virginia Senate passed bill SB 304 back in February of 2024. And that bill basically made accessory dwelling units a by right use. And- um, made accessory dwelling units a, um, by right use. Um, and, a- and when I talked to a local attorney here in Rocky Mount, I said, okay, I've got this restrictive covenant, but if my neighbors come against me a- and they say, you know, I'm gonna, they're gonna sue me because I'm, I'm violating this, um, this restriction, I said, what rights do I have? And they said, and the attorney here told me that, um, if ADUs get approved at the state level, it's been approved by the Senate, but the House of Delegates tabled it and said they were going to bring it up in twenty twenty-five. Um, but basically what I was told was by this attorney is that if an ADU gets approved by state law and it's a by right use, then this restrictive covenant would be unenforceable. So, um, you know, I still want to work with my neighbors and make sure that, you know, I, I'm not upsetting anybody, um, but I do want to use this property, like I say, for, for temporary living space. Now, it won't be full-time as originally planned with my mother-in-law living there, um, but I would like to use this space for my family when they come to visit, um, hopefully quite frequently. Um, and as Lisa mentioned, there were a number of conditions, um, o- on that approval, a- and, you know, we plan to, to follow every one of those conditions that are, that are spelled out there. Well, and, and we already talked about, um, you know, I think this, you know, this is not a detriment to adjacent properties. When I look at just an aerial view of these seven lots, five, uh, of the seven lots have separate garages on them. They're two-story garages. Um, they're either two, three, or in one case, a four-car garage. Um, a- and so I don't think it's a detriment to any pro- any of the other properties. I mean, we designed this garage so that it looks like it belongs. It looks architecturally just like the house. Um, so it's not an eyesore. It's a, i- 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 it's, it's, it's a very nice building, and I'm very proud of it. Um, you know, we worked real hard over, over our lifetime to, to save the money to have this house and this garage. And so, um, you know, I, I don't thi- some, somebody mentioned at the, the public hearing, uh, for the Planning Commission that somehow I might be, um, negatively affecting the property values, a- and I completely disagree with that. I mean, this, like I said, this thing looks beautiful, a- and, um, it's not going to be subdivided. I can tell you that we have no intention to ever sell this property. In fact, um, we've already talked with our children about it. It's our hope that they will keep this house forever, too. I mean, it's, i- it's beautiful, and we love it, and we've done a lot of upgrades on it over the, the, the years that we've had it. And so, so, yeah, I, you know, I, I appreciate your reviewing this application, a- and I'm willing to, to do what, whatever, within reason, um, is, is asked of us to, to get this approved.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions, comments?
I'd just make a quick question. Uh, we've got the county attorney here, of course.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, um, Mr. Quinn, if you would just confirm what I think I know?
We're gonna have to go on a closed session if you got a question for the attorney. We did it our minutes last year.
Okay, so I can't ask you a question now? Huh? No, I was just gonna ask the subjective question about deed restrictions, and, um, I don't believe that we, as a county, um, would get involved in, uh, making any determinations based upon deed restrictions on private property.
Okay.
Yeah, so I wanted to just reinforce that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also, I would just say that, you know, um, R1 has this provision for an additional, um, residence on the property under the strict condition of immediate family members.
Family members, yep, understand.
And so, you know, for me, that's what the zoning code says.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty clear-cut, and it's a compliance issue from there on. Um, so I just, I just wanted to let you know that I've looked really hard at this, and I've been out to the site. Um, and if staff would follow up, you know, on the runoff, um, that would satisfy, uh, my concern.
Yep, understand.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, you got anyone signed up to address this? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this? Come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Craig Shablam. I live at twenty-six fifty Lakewood Forest Road, the adjacent property to Ms. Yuzza. Um, basically, at the last planning board meeting on this variance, they stated that there will be no impact on property value. I've talked to two ass- assessors so far, and they've said, if you change this, there is an impact on my property. My property taxes went up sixty-three percent this year. Didn't co- actually, it went up a little bit, then they sent me a letter back and said, oops, we made a mistake, and we're gonna raise it some more. And I agreed, you know, you pay your dues, that's what we bought the house for. But when we bought the house in this subdivision, we bought it for the beauty of the subdivision, how many houses were gonna be there, and it wasn't to be that I was gonna be in a townhouse or multi-family development. That was not ever the, uh, sense. I understand that you don't, uh, how can I say, uh, go along with when people have, uh, restriction covenances, that's a civil matter. I'll give up on that. But the bottom line is, since I moved in there, the original owner of that property was Mr. Kenneth L. Ellis, and I gave him a variance so that he could have his dock, a floating dock off the dock, so that it encroached into our lot lines. When Mr. Yuzza moved in, he asked me the same thing. Can I now get a variance from you so I can put my jet skis on that side? Now, he could have put them on the other side, but he asked, can I put them on, on your side? Again, being a good neighbor, I said yes. This variance is past being a good neighbor. I didn't want to move into a townhouse or multi-housing development. Yes, every one of the lots in the seven, um, lot development have garages, and they're garages. They're not apartments. Um, it just doesn't make sense. I understand things change, but R1 was R1, and R1 meant you had a house there. This is what people bought. This is what we all agreed to. And I just think this is going past the good neighborly part. Uh, needless to say, if I thought I, uh, this was gonna come about, I wouldn't have went for the other two variances. But you all have to do what you have to do. I just don't think it's being a good neighbor putting in something like this. If he wanted to go and have extra people in his house for parties or whatever, every Fourth of July, I have my family come down. We've had between twenty-eight and thirty-six people in my house. Didn't go and stick them in a garage. Left them in the house. You know, you, you do whatever you're gonna do for one time or two times a year, but you don't go and start building an apartment building for your family. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here wish to come forward and speak to this matter? Anyone else before I close? All right, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the board. What's your pleasure? Will everybody speak at once?
Mr. Chairman, I would make, um, a motion to find that the use will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in the harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with the public health safety and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit for the purpose of a home, second, single-family detached dwelling on a lot in accordance with section twenty-five dash two-two-three of the zoning ordinance with the five conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Need a second?
Second.
Got a, got a sec- got a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson.
Yes. All right. Ms. Twitt, uh, transfer of county property?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, under tab sixteen, you should have a public notice tonight. This is for the, um, potential transfer disposition, if you will, of county property. County attorney, I spoke about this earlier this morning. Um, you'll have the property information there for you. It is the property located at forty West Church Street, uh, and this, of course, is a follow-up to last September's agreement with the town of Rocky Mount, where we were transferring properties, uh, for a property on Church Street, uh, with a property with the town on, um, Court Street. So, uh, I can answer any questions, or, uh, perhaps, uh, Mr. Quinn, if, uh, the board has any, uh, questions or comments. Mr. Chairman, this does, because it is disposition of county property, even though it's a tran- it does require a public hearing, and I do understand the town of Rocky Mount, uh, has previously advertised and held their hearing, uh, and, uh, as well for that specific property.
Did they approve the transfer?
It's my understanding that they have.
Is there, uh, is there any debt or any restrictions on this property?
Um, not, not, not on the county property, no, sir.
Is there any on the town property, on the building?
Um, the town property, uh, does have a long-term lease, Mr. about that lease, uh, this morning with the Franklin County Rescue Squad.
And what is that, what is that lease? Consists of?
I think.
Is there, if it's vacated for any amount of time, or does the property, what hap- does it relinquish back to the owner, to the county? If it ceases to be a rescue squad? Does it come back to the county or to the town?
It does.
It don't, it? Anybody else got any questions or comments, or does that open up any, anything? All right, so we need a motion for this to go to public hearing, correct?
It has been advertised for a public hearing tonight, Chairman, so we would-
Oh, so we don't have a public hearing tonight?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, we got anybody signed up for the public hearing?
No, sir.
If anybody here wishes to speak to the public hearing for this piece of property, the town of Rocky Mount, uh, uh, Rescue Squad, being, coming over to the county, anybody here at all? All right, seeing nobody come forward on that, I'm gonna open it up to the board. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the transaction with the town of Rocky Mount.
Got a motion, do I need, I need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson.
Yes. I think we've taken care of all the appointments. Uh, I don't think we missed none. Did we miss any? Giving everybody an opportunity. I don't think we missed any. I think we got them all. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with our comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to the individual mem- board members or employees of the county, of the board or county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of local government and not a question-and-answer session, and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk?
Keith Johnson? Keith Johnson?
Sir, if you'll state your name and address for the board, please, for the record.
Good evening. I'm Keith Johnson, one ninety Leaning Oak Road in Boonsville, Virginia.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here to talk to you about the school board again. Um, I suspect that you're up to date with national politics, particularly those things that may influence citizens in our community. Uh, there are many things President Trump has promised to change, including a commitment to abolish the Federal Department of Education. He also supports school vouchers so parents truly have school choice. How do these changes influence resources and obligations from this board? Dissolving the Department of Education may be a windfall of resources for Franklin County, or those resources could be used for other priorities. Will the state then require localities to increase the funding needed for public schools? No one knows at this point, at least not that I'm aware of. Let's look at Florida for an example of what may happen. Governor DeStan- DeSantis started a statewide voucher program two years ago. This type of voucher program allows for funding from state, federal, and local resources to follow the child to the school of the parent's choosing. In Florida, test scores have improved, graduation rates have increased to ninety percent, and Florida officials are talking about closing entire school districts. When parents have a choice, they choose better schools. Vouchers have improved education in Florida. Our public schools keep, our public schools keep losing students. What are, uh, what are they going to do to create an environment where parents want to return their children to public schools? One of you asked this very question. It's a joint meeting this week. Thank you very much. Um, the answer from the school was a new funding program so students from Franklin County can obtain two years of free college education from Virginia Western. Sounds great until you realize we already had this kind of a program with CCAT, and you funded that, and it did not have an influence on parents keeping their children in Franklin County schools. The important point I took from the exchange was school officials did not know why parents continue choosing alternative education. School officials don't know because they have not asked the parents making that choice. How can we fix something they refuse to acknowledge? In the paper last week, it was reported Governor Youngkin proposed five hundred seventeen million dollars in additional state aid to local schools, two hundred and ninety million dollars for school construction, in addition to fifty million for a voucher program called Opportunity Scholarships. With this kind of uncertainty for schools to, uh, federal and state level, can we, is it really prudent to spend eighty million dollars in additional debt and new taxes for a new school building? Just to tell you really quick, I, I don't have time for the rest of it. Uh, you know of some cases where adult men have been charged with sexual abuse. You only hear about that very rarely. It happens a whole lot more often than you hear about. All right, there's more there to question what we should do with that. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I have no other speakers.
Is there anyone else here wishes to speak for public comment? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Brenda Ferguson. My address is five hundred Crooked Oak Road, Rocky Mount, Virginia.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here to, we are concerned in the community be- because of lack of EMS at our squad building. We have, um, this has been a problem down through the last probably year. However, it wasn't as bad as it is right now. We're going two to three days consistently without any EMS coverage at our squad building. Um, we understand the reason probably is economical and due to the shortage of personnel to run EMS calls. However, we were promised many, many times that because our squad is on two-twenty, and there's a lot of accidents and hazardous conditions, that there would always be a career person there at our building to run calls. Um, this past week, we had two very serious accident incidents, four calls in one day. Two of those were priority one, in which two of the ladies were unconscious, unresponsive. One of the ladies spent the night in the hospital on a ventilator. There was an eighteen-minute response time from Pharam to come to Fort Mountain to assist this lady. She spent the night, they, they did see- She spent the night, they, they did CPR and was able to bring her back, they even called for lifeguard. This is very serious as far as our community is concerned at Fork Mountain, and now there's questions being asked, where's Fork Mountain Squad? We're paying our taxes, what has happened to Fork Mountain Rescue Squad? And it's kinda hard to explain when we drove to that house to help a resident where there's a squad and why has it taken them so long? And this is our biggest concern. Another concern is they've taken our name off of our ambulance. They can take it to other squads and they have their name on their ambulances, but when they get a call outside of that area, they're assisting Fork Mountain, so we feel like they may be getting volume for that call. In other words, if another squad answers for Fork Mountain, they're getting the volume, and the, the rule is whoever gets the most volume, they would put career people in their buildings. And it's been a big concern, like they took the name off of our ambulance, and we were promised some time ago that it would be put back on, but it has not been put back on. This lowered our donations. When other squads shows up at someone's house, they don't understand why Farum, Snow Creek, or someone else is there, and they're, they're gonna give us the donation if we get a donation. And that's what we depended on, other than the budget from Franklin County. I realize that, that they're doing, you know, I've been told we're doing all we can do, we've spoke to Nick Mitchell about it, we've spoke to Mr. Fowler, and it's out of their hands, but we need an answer there because we would like to see a crew back at our building that will take care of our community. Any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address that? Anyone at all? If you do come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Alright, seeing no one else come forward, give you one last chance. Seeing no one else come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing, public comments. Okay, I'll go into other matters by supervisors. I know we talked about this earlier in our meeting, and if you wanna change this, first off, let's do it this way. How many of you wanna change this back to when we have it, when our county, when Mr. Whitlow does his, and when our county attorney does his? You wanna change it back to then? Or do you wanna change it to the very first, or do you wanna leave it where it's at? We don't really need to put this to Thursday night because we don't know whether or not we even gonna have a meeting on Thursday or not.
It's done with me so long as we're out here and not back in B75.
Well, we, we should be out here. We should be out here at this time of the meeting. We done it at this time so that, I mean, I remember when we done it and put it at this time instead of when Chris and everything done his, it's so that we would have plenty of time. So that we would have plenty of time to do it, and we're out here so it's on the TV and podcast and everything.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, my suggestion for me is to put it between the county administrator report and Mr. Gwynn's report, perhaps. I, I think Mr. Mitchell had a good point earlier. You know, if we, if we have a long evening, we've had some long evenings till 11 or 11:30, and at that point in time, we're tired, quite frankly. So, and, and I would like the opportunity for the public to be able to hear what we have to say and contribute. So I, that would be my recommendation for whatever it's worth.
I'll go along with the majority because to me, as long as it's out here, I don't care if it's at the end or in the middle myself, I'll go along with the majority of the group wants. Anyone else?
For me, for me, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Lori, I'd rather move it up in the day because I think there's more public out here. Sometimes this room's empty at the end of the night and we're out here having our public comment, and I think it would be good for the general public, public to hear our discussion.
Okay, everybody knows what the question is. The question is, do you want it in the middle of the day when the county attorney and county administrator do theirs, or do you want it at the end of the day like now? Let's just do a, I'll start down there with you, Mr. James.
I'd like to move it to middle of the day.
Same. Middle.
Middle of the day.
Middle of the day.
I'm indifferent.
Huh?
I'm indifferent.
Doesn't matter to you. Doesn't matter to me, either middle of the day is fine. So I guess we'll go to it in the middle of the day, with the exception of today. Today, we'll do it at the end of the day.
Go in form, Mr. Chairman, we'll make that change on the-
We'll make that change next month.
That's an easy one.
That's, that's, that's an easy, alright. Other matters by superv- supervisors. Who want, let's start down there like we started, which end we started on a while ago? We started with Mr. James, let's start with, Mr. Dan, you got anything?
So I would like to have on the agenda for the next meeting an update on the village plans, since it was a, a year ago that we adopted either, well, brand-new ones or revised plans. It would be great to hear feedback on what was accomplished with each of the three village plans last year and what the plans are for the coming year.
Need a, to have a meeting on the village plan. Is it it?
That's it.
Mr. Taylor?
Is, wait, if I, if I can, Mr. Chairman, so there's consensus then next, next month will, for the update then, you know, hearing from the board on, on village plans, and I assume that, just an update, Mr. Quinn, and we're not necessarily an entire, entire afternoon work session, but enough-
Oh, no, I, I would just envision an update, you know, one slide on each that said, this is what we did last year, this is what we plan this year, that's it.
Sure, alright.
Are, are the constituents are interested in what's going on, and it's a way of us communicating back to them.
Sure.
Everybody's cool with that, correct?
Thank you for that clarification, thank you.
I would like to just take the time to thank Mr. and Mrs. Ferguson for coming. What some of you may not know, they've been lifelong supporters and members of the Fork Mountain Rescue Squad, and they've served that community for many years. And I too have concerns about when we pull our EMS, our, our crews from buildings to fill other buildings, and I think this, one thing that, that's been happening here lately is they've been pulling the crew from Fork Mountain and taking to Snow Creek to staff that building and leaving Fork Mountain vacant. For me, that's not solving a problem, that's creating possibly a bigger problem. I, I'm, I'm hopeful that Director Fowler has this problem fixed with the new additions of, of our recruits that just graduated from the academy a couple of weeks ago, and as soon as they can all get signed off on and get off probation, what, that'll be seven new members that hopefully will fill the staffing shortages. But I don't like pulling, you know, I understand when there's a big call volume throughout the day and you've got rescue squads caught up in Roanoke and on different calls, and you have to backfill for that reason, but when you start pulling from Fork Mountain to go to Snow Creek, or pull from Farum to, you know, it'd be as crazy to take a crew from Farum to Callaway or somewhere, but we, you know, we need to make sure that we're adequately staffing these, and, and I'd like to hear from Director Fowler to see if those seven new recruits will fix this problem, because I understand where they're coming, and I hear it from a whole, a lot more people than, than just Mr. and Mrs. Ferguson. They, you know, they, they take a lot of pride in these communities that have gone out over the years and raised the money to build the building, to have that squad there, and, and it was a full responding volunteer squad up until just a few years back. And when it, you know, the little things like having the name on the side of the truck for the county, that's not a big, shouldn't be a big deal, a few bucks striping, but for these communities, that's some pride and some ownership. You know, that truck represents their community, you know, these people have worked hard for this service. And so if the, if the name's been taken off the truck, call Director Fowler and tell him to get it put back on there. If Fork Mountain, if, if the truck is primarily stationed at a building, it should have their name on it. I understand we have trucks broke down, we, we're ordering new trucks, ambulances are a pain in the neck. You order them today, it takes three years to get one, and they've gone up from 125,000 a couple of years ago to 300-plus thousand dollars apiece now. So, and fire trucks are same thing, it is hard. But thank y'all for coming, we're gonna, we will get with Director Fowler and see if we can fix this problem because it's, it's not doing the community's proper service, in my opinion. With that said, I would like to recognize one of our sheriff's deputies who, in one of the calls just last week, by understanding, was close to one of these calls, and he responded and rendered aid and possibly saved this lady's life. And Captain Mollin, if you will relay this message back to the sheriff, I'd like for him to recognize Deputy Bo Custer for his outstanding response in this call. I know Bo has a, a training in EMS, and, and we're, we're certainly lucky to have officers like him with that training who are willing to go out and provide that extra service for the community, so relay that message, if you will. And just one last announcement, as of just a few minutes ago, we should be, we can say that Farum College is a First Division III school, to have a member inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame, as Billy Wagner was selected tonight, so that's something to be proud of. We have a Hall of Famer that went to school in Farum, Virginia.
I was gonna ask Jim at the end, he won. I said you took it away from Jim, 'cause I was gonna ask him at the win, at the end, if he had an update.
That's something to be-
Sorry about that, Jim, Tim beat you.
Alright, I can add though that Ichiro Suzuki and Sissy Sathia were also elected.
Cool.
Just two quick things, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I would like to ask staff, Mr. Whitlow specifically, and Mr. Sandy, to give us an update on the compliance officer. We've not seen a job description for this position and kind of what we can expect in terms of communication with our constituents. And also, so just an update on that, have we hired, have we not? That, that piece.
Sure, I can, I can elaborate a little bit more without getting in details because we still going through the personnel selection process, so I, I can only speak to so much, but we are going through a second round of interviews that, later this week, and hope to make a decision, you know, on the position, in terms of the position, the job description and so forth. May I suggest maybe a Friday packet this week? Maybe we'll know more this, later in the week, hopefully, with, with some progress on that position, and, and I could, we could work on a communication back to the board with an update.
And I just have one other thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman. And it came up earlier this evening, with respect to our school resource officers. We are very cognizant of the fact that that number for us is gonna jump to over $300,000, I believe in 2027, and that's money that we don't have budgeted. It's gonna be a new expenditure for us, and I know that there's been, there's been pressure on the General Assembly, and I've seen it from other localities, to provide funding to the localities or some portion thereof through grants for that, but I think we're really gonna have to become more proactive, and whether it's, you know, giving Will and Bill, you know, a personal phone call, and, and finding out, you know, especially now that we, for instance, got the request from Will, that we got last week or whenever it was. I don't think we can afford to let this just, just go on and just wait and see what happens, because this is gonna be an expensive, recurring expense for this board, and we need to be having this discussion with the schools as well.
Wanna do this with a letter, or you wanna do this with a resolution?
What's your recommendation?
I don't have a problem with doing a resolution.
I think it-
From the board?
Yeah.
I think it would say a whole lot.
If, if the board would be in concurrence with that, yeah.
What's the rest of the board think? Everybody shaking their head, yes.
I mean, it's a big deal, it is a very big deal.
It's a pretty big deal. We can go on record with a resolution that we, we support it and, and want them to do that.
If, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know we have, you know, communicated the SRO funding issue as part of the board's adopted legislative agenda, I mean, that is one of the options. I think this, I think this will make more attention with a resolution to Will and Bill, and then, Ms. Smith, you mentioned maybe a phone call, certainly I could reach out to, to Will and Bill. And one thing Mr. Carter and I have discussed, I, I know there's been some back and forth in legislation, I've reading different articles, and it's a, it's a topic statewide, what, it's, it's not unlike the 1% sales tax option. What concerns me is a lot of the attention are on SROs all of a sudden, primarily in schools that don't have them in rural Virginia. We've went out of our way, Franklin County, we've bit the bullet the last couple of years to fund SROs. And, you know, that's gonna be on us, and not taking anything away from localities that have not done that, but if the state only makes available funding for the localities that have not, how about the localities that have? And, and the bill that's coming, and so we'll have that conversation with, with, with Will and with Bill as well.
And I think we need to communicate with Baco as well, with their lobbying efforts, even though it's a short session, their Local Government Day is Thursday. So, you know, we're, we're talking earlier about our budget and how tight things are, and the amount of growth that's being projected at this point is minimal. Just think if this is the year that we had to come up with $350,000 for SROs, I mean, that's just a tough hill to climb. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to reiterate my comments earlier during the budget work session about those two schools. I think we really need to get working on that. I don't wanna have those two buildings sitting empty and sitting empty and sitting empty. If we can't reutilize them and, and we don't have the wherewithal to put the money back into them, then I think we need to figure out what we're gonna do with them and possibly dispose of them and direct that money other areas. And that's all I have.
I'll follow up on what Supervisor Tatum said, and I'd also like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Ferguson for actually coming up here and speaking to the board instead of just complaining about it and not making a move. That's what it takes for things to get done. I brought it up earlier, buying new ambulances and everything is fine, I'm not gonna delve in the weeds about personnel, who puts them where, how that works, what goes on in vehicle, I'm not getting into that. All I will say is there's a problem there, a big problem, that needs to be addressed, and as I said earlier, I'd like an update on it. We get updates on other stuff all the time, and this right here, in my opinion, is more important than any of it. And it needs to be figured out, and waiting for the budget or waiting for anything else isn't, uh, needs to be figured out now. Running the whole county on just a couple of ambulances, that, that, that's not cutting it. And, and as I said earlier about giving services to our citizens, you know, and it's Snow Creek and Fork Mountain, I keep up with it, I keep up with who's staffed. Neither one of them are being staffed.
And Nick, you know, to compound the problem, when some of these ambulances have to make a run to Corillian and Roanoke, that's taken them out of, out of-
A long way.
-out of call for three, four hours.
But that's something we're gonna have to deal with.
But we don't have that backed-up redundancy.
But we, we have the positions there, and the people just aren't there, and we gotta figure it out.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all I got.
I will make one comment on that. People that pay taxes in this county, some of them don't wanna go to Corillian Hospital in Rocky Mount, they wanna go to Lewis Gale, or they wanna go to Corillian and Roanoke, and, you know, we're just gonna have to provide the service that these people want. And put their name back on the ambulance, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard.
Mr. Jameson?
Couple weeks ago, we brought up, in fact, that we've been getting complaints on a building department from builders, developers. Tim, I know he mentioned he had too. I would like to follow up personally, and I don't know whether the board wants to bring Mr. Broaden and, and Ms. Cooper in and talk to all of us. I'm willing to sit down with her, and I think Tim mentioned he would, but if, if it's the board's pleasure, I mean, with all of us, but I'd like to know, I'm still getting questions, what's going on. I would like to be able to have an answer to give these people who ask me.
How about the board, is that thing with the board to have a meeting with the, a building, I mean, with planning and zoning? and zoning and building altogether about these reoccurring problems we're having?
Mr. Chairman, I agree 100%. I mean, I want to know what our options are. Is there something that this board can do in regard to something that the county has control over? Now, if it's something health department-wise, or VDOT-wise, or something like that, we have no control over that, but if it's something that's within our purview that we do control, then what do we need to do to streamline it, to make it efficient so that our contractors and developers aren't having to wait months to get permits?
Correct. That's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I may, of course, you know, the gentleman last month, of course, brought the issue to the board regarding the Health Department. I have since reached out to, I mentioned, I should have remembered to do this under my items earlier. We have followed up with Dr. Gately, who's over at our regional health department that oversees the septic and the well permitting process. He is convening a meeting with his staff and our building and planning staff to do exactly, Mr. Tatum, what you're saying. What are some things that, you know, we can control? What are some things that they can do locally at the local health department? There are some things we can't do, and I'm learning this, you know, from the state perspective. There are parameters and timelines from their perspective, and so we are looking to hold that meeting within the next couple of weeks. Staff is working on that building and planning staff. And then, of course, we wanted to hold that meeting, go through that, and then bring that information back to the board, if that's the desire of the board, maybe at the earliest convenience, whether it's the February work session or March work session, whichever one we, when we're ready to come back, but we are actively pushing that.
Ms. Whitlow, can you tell me, does our department wait till they get the approval from the Health Department before we start reviewing any of the plans or any of the work here in our office?
Not necessarily, Mr. Jameson. There are some times, you know, we do have to receive a septic, or we do have to receive a well permit before, of course, you know, a building permit can be issued. However, if the builder and so forth brings plans in, EMS plans, grading plans, that can go ahead and get started on that part of the process while we're waiting on the building department, or VDOT. But we, there are some things there that we can do, and we have in the last few weeks, as I understand, from a permit technician standpoint, to make sure things just aren't waiting in the file folder for the, or the inbox, if you will, for the next point along the process. But we are looking to make those improvements anywhere we can, because we are, you know, prescribed by the state, very, very prescriptive in terms of what VDOT can do and Health Department can do, and I know that frustrates everyone, including our staff.
Well, even that, we find out, it would give us an answer back, you know, that we can give the builders and all.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I got two or three things I want to bring out. I too concur with what's been said tonight about the rescue squad. I don't want to micromanage at all. I want Chief Fowler to do his, you know, do his job, and I think he's doing a good job. But if we need to get more people in here, then we need to get more people in here to do this and to handle these calls and do that. And then, I've had a couple, I know that when I was off sick, that you all met two or three times, and it's been brought to my attention, there was a couple of things done about the fire departments and the fire truck, and I know Boone's Mill's the next one on the rotation. And it was even said today that there was like $850,000 that had been appropriated for a new fire truck, and Boone's Mill is asking for more. Now, they say they can come up with a little bit more money than that, but the reason they're wanting a different truck, this particular truck that they're looking at has foam on it. And, Tim, you may be able to help me with this. There is a, I think there's only one other truck in the county, and that's at Rocky Mount, that may have foam on it.
They all have foam on it.
Huh?
They all have foam.
They all do.
All the engines have foam, and most of the tankers in the county have foam.
And this just came up.
I was at Henry does. And Faram does, too. They're asking for a custom chassis, is what they're asking.
They are asking for a custom chassis that will haul four people.
And there's no other fire company in the county that hauls four people in a tanker.
I'm not done, but I'm just going to quit. Anybody else got anything to say? Meeting's adjourned until Thursday at 3:00.